So. Yeah. Stories. Stories. But. Would have sent the order like they'd send. Sometimes. We actually. Get in. Actually, it's crazy about people taking us that position. My Christmas to all rooms. I'm a vanguard. So. We have to try.
Who has the eight? And I don't see what's there.
He's like the southern. So. As I've heard of roads down. We're just awful and then we went.
Okay, this is twenty nine, the meeting of. Rochester planning board. Well, what? By some place allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic for which stands. One nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Stacy, would you? For the role?
Uh Chair Duda's.
Here.
Member Nelson?
Here.
Member Duda's absent. Member Vestheren?
Here.
Member Farmald?
Here.
Member Finsky?
Yeah.
Member Roberts?
Yeah.
And we have Steve Church, Steve Gordon and myself. Okay.
Great. So we only have four projects on the agenda, but um. Two of them, I'm expecting they'll take an hour to an hour and a half piece sets. Rav Tom and Verizon. So they're at the end of the agenda. Before we get to the first item, which is um. Tom Pinker's. Um, I'd like to approve the minutes from the last meeting you should have in your package. The minutes from the meeting of September ninth?
Eighth.
Eighth. Um, does anybody have any questions about those minutes? I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the eighth. I make a motion to Peter makes the motion on seconds. If all in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So it's six with one um absent. Uh by the way, attach the minutes or many of the documents that we went through uh at the last main pertinent documents. Second thing, so um. I'm asking different members of the board to handle particular projects as they come up. I started that. Few weeks back. There's so much on everybody's plate. Um, it it's almost impossible for me to go and do a deep dive in every new project that's coming up. We have quite a few and most of them are. Some of them are easy, but some of them aren't um big. So um Peter's been bird dogging uh a project that you haven't seen yet called uh Dunn Farms. And uh he's taken care of that. There's. Lots of wonderful things that we worked out with that project. Jennifer agreed to take care of the orthodontist um. Project, which is where Pink's links used to be. Everybody's familiar with the indoor golf. Um. Business right there on two oh nine and Hans has been cleaning up. Um, some of the detailed legal matters having to do with meta. Specifically, the HOA, the RMA, the easement. And also um. Potentially, the project. That conservation area from the project. Being handled by the Rondell Asopus Land Conservancy. So we've got three of the four things done. Still a few. Details.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to come back to the board. I want to keep the board up to date because you agreed to let me work on it. And I did frustratingly so until it got complicated. So I asked on. Our in-house lawyer. On the board if he could sort some of the things out. So you want to give a quick report on it?
Sure. So we basically we are approaching the finish line with meta. To be very excited. Uh I've been working with the applicant on the RMA. This needs a little. Change and update, but it's basically ready to go. Um, the bond agreement, I he sent something to me tonight. I I think it's it's very very close.
Yeah, the bond agreement has to be approved by the board and.
Has to be.
They needed something in writing, so that's being handled.
And then third, we have been working on the easement. And there will be a two-step process. So we start kind of to put everything, the whole conservation easement into the HOA. In the beginning, and then later we will transfer part. Of that into into the into an easement of the one to the sustainability.
Oh.
The reason why we have to do this is it just takes a while. Till you know, like surveyors are there and then all the outside professionals. Until the board has approved. So that that's why we do kind of this two two two-step dance.
Ask you a question about that?
Sure.
The conservation overlay that they put on the site plan. Was that surveyed? Is that a surveyed conservation area when they submitted?
Well. For all purposes, lot ten, which was the larger area where the lake was. And a and a little bit of lot two and three, which is weird that. Fine soil area was. Those were surveyed.
They were. Okay.
However, for the land conservancy requires their own survey. To. And I see it uh our our other attorney perking up. Dave will have to take a look at some pieces of this also. He has already made recommendations.
So I think this is the first time we've done one of these.
That's exactly. That's why it's interesting because it's a model for future.
Yeah.
For the future.
There's stuff always comes up that you don't expect.
Right. And what makes it a little goofy uh technical term is that. There are two conservation areas and the the only one that the uh Rondell. Sopas Land Conservancy wants is the one on the back lot ten. So lots two and three will stay. With the HOA to be managed by the HOA. Lot ten will go to a conservancy. And added to that is that the applicant wanted to get going with. The lots begin to sell them. They begin to so. Okay, we can put both in the HOA and then strip them out later on, but it makes it a little bit more complicated. So that's why I asked on. On charge it is.
Size? What is size of the conservance? It's a where it's located? No, not size. This. I'm sorry, size of the lot. The size of lot is um. I I don't like it.
I don't remember.
It's it's at least it's at least like fifteen acres.
Yeah.
It's more.
The whole property was forty some odd? I don't remember the exact number.
It's around fifteen or something sixteen.
I'm sorry, the whole property was ninety acres, right?
Sixty.
No, forty five wasn't.
What I thought was forty five. How much is the? Lot ten?
Lot ten about fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay, but you said fifteen. So I asked anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Okay. Good.
Um, I I have something to add to that, which is just that uh because Hans and I are both on the board. Of the land conservancy as well as this board gonna. It's a it's an option that is available. To the town, the applicants, but I just want to. Make sure that you know every one of these things that they do come up. Is they have to be vetted. Carefully by the land conservancy um because there's you know criteria that we have. And uh we're not. The board wants to make sure that it's not a. Considered any sort of easy out for. Applicants or stuff, so. Want to put that out there.
Yeah, it's 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 depending on board approval. By the conservancy. And it's not like an automatic.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Hans.
Thank you.
All right. So the first project on the agenda is uh Tom Pinker's. Uh the orthodontist office. Tom, you want to? Any place up there? You want the three chairs? So Jennifer spoke to Mr. Pinkers. Jennifer first went through the whole project, came up with some items. I remember this from two years ago when it was Pink's links. And so Jennifer and I chatted and then Jennifer spoke with Mr. Pinkers. Uh this morning. And there's one or two issues which are already mentioned too. We had a chance to speak before the meeting. Jennifer, you want to quickly? Just go through them?
Yeah, that's fine. And he spoke today, so even if here's some things you've already heard before, but that's okay. With the benefit of everyone. And if anyone has any questions, please jump in. So we reviewed the maps. There are a few issues that need to be resolved. It sounds like that shouldn't be too much of a problem. There were maps from the twenty twenty-three application. This map here appears to be an older one that shows some items on site that no longer exist. So for example, this shows fuel tanks, but. Were there fuel tanks on site? No, no. So. That will need to be updated um. And there are a few other odds and ends that we were talking about. So a few things that uh beyond the fuel tanks and they need to um. Fix the meets and bounds and just make sure that it's uh has all the details that are required for the plant works in the middle. Um. There were a few other items that I think are also required, like the sign. Don't we have to see what the sign is going to look like? Right?
The building.
And we need to see the parking spots on the map. We talked about the dumpster. I'm I'll wait how he's down. You'll get this in writing as well.
So Jennifer, may? Um.
I had, sorry, can I?
Go ahead.
Finish my list. Um, so those were a few items. Um, and then in terms of reviews, we'd also ask about what reviews would be required. And I think, as I understand it, um Holster County Planning Board also needs to review the project. Is that right, Dave?
Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And when it's. Because it got classified as a. Special use permit.
Right?
County doesn't distinguish size. It's.
Scope. It's just.
It's just it's a special use permit. They require a report.
So.
It fronts Route two oh nine.
So it has to go to the county. When does the next county meet?
They meet on the first Wednesdays of every month, so.
So.
You're unfortunately talking the November meeting.
Which Wednesday?
First Wednesday, I'm sorry.
So it'll be November, whatever first Wednesday of November is. Okay.
It's gonna be much to do about nothing, but with my guess.
Why not? Why not that?
They meet they meet in two nights. You have to get your stuff into that two weeks edit.
So for you, sir, that means that you would need to provide us with revisions. Two weeks before. The first Wednesday in November. So if we're working backwards, it's like mid-October. I don't have my calendar up.
No, I see.
See what date that is.
So how about we um let me summarize?
I I don't remember going to the county last time.
You didn't because it wasn't a special.
Why? Why? What's special use?
That's how it was. So what happens is the building department. Takes a look at it and they categorize that they do what's uh called a finding of purpose, if you would. And they categorized it. This time it's a special use. The last time they categorized it as a site plan. So because it was a site plan last time. I guess you didn't have to go. But because it's a special use this time. Um, you do have to go to the county. So.
Do I physically go to a meeting?
Sorry.
Do I have to physically go to a meeting?
No, you don't have to go. We send material to the county. They take a look at it at the monthly meeting and then they get back to us with any comments. So Tom, you mentioned you just needed to know. What you have to talk to Bill Eggers about? To get.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have that. The the map has to be done redone. Um, Stacy, just want you to capture all this because it's a lot of little details. He's got to redo the map. The meets and bounds are not on the map. That I'm. They weren't correct on the old map. The the deed is wrong. And I'm going to leave it to you to figure it out with your attorney. It's missing a whole section of the. Of the meets and bounds. Um, that's probably why the map. The old map was wrong. They didn't have the meets and bounds, so they just drew a line there. So that's one thing you got to fix. Um, and the total acreage on the map is wrong, one point six seven versus one point three six. So we just need to fix that. I'd like to get you back on the agenda to look at everything. Um. But I think it it doesn't make by the end of October, but. You would not have been to the county planning board yet. So it doesn't make sense to do it in October. It makes sense to do it after the county planning board. So Dave, what's our Jennifer, what's our first meeting in in November?
First meeting in November. You meet the second, so the November tenth.
All right, so. I'm going to put you tentatively on for November the tenth. So. Since this is so small. You should be able to get something from the county after that meeting of. The first Wednesday in November.
So I was looking at the calendar. So if it's if Holster County Planning Board is November fifth. That means we have to refer. By October twenty-second.
Right.
So we need your revised materials by when? How much time do we need to review?
It'd be great to get it by the end of the week because it's not a lot of work. End of this week, if you can. But the end of next week is fine.
Oh, uh, whatever Bill can do, Bill. It's up to him. I don't care enough.
It's just. I don't think he has to resurvey it. He's just got to. But that's up to him.
Holster County Planning Board is November.
Fifth.
November first. Okay.
Dave, you had a comment?
Well, I was just if I can elaborate on the county referrals. Um. It would have been exempt. Because it's reoccupancy or reuse of an existing structure. But it has to have. Existing or proposed channelized access to the state highway, which it doesn't have. You know what that means?
I have no idea.
You've got wide open.
Yeah.
Car vehicles can go on and off the state. Route two oh nine anywhere on your property, right? If the county wants that to be channelized.
Done like that for. Forty-five years.
Well, makes you go to them for comment. Don't be surprised. They're going to say it shouldn't be.
Okay.
I. I don't know what to tell you.
I still don't understand a special use permit because. I don't know. It's just about beauty salon and it was that. It was A and M Hardware in a day. Now it's. Orthodontic office.
Well, I think we've we're.
I don't get that.
The chair and I've talked about the. We might want to, as a board, talk about changes, changes of use being categorized that way in your code. Because this is. Basically swapping out a use in the existing building.
I'm not even changing.
So is there anything that we can do for?
But it's a change of you.
I understand that. I totally understand.
Is there anything that we can do for Mr. Pinker's right now? Where you're talking about going forward?
I was having open discussion about the channelizing of the access to the road.
Okay.
If you're prepared to do that, it's not referral.
Okay. Did you understand that?
So there's no way to change.
There's no way to change the um findings of the of the. Play of the building department. Unless you want to go to. The ZBA.
Oh, I'm trying to get this done. It's, you know, whatever. Uh, okay.
So they categorize it as a special use. What a planner is saying is if you want to channelize it on your own. It doesn't have to go to the county. On the other hand, if you don't want to do that and it goes to the county. And the county says you have to channelize it, you're going to have to channelize it anyway.
But but no.
Don't.
Jump in. Um. You may be hearing that when it goes to the county, that's a whole other board. You've got to deal with the whole other review. First of all, physically, you don't really have to be involved. Something between us and the county. Second of all, for you to understand, the county does not have the ability to deny you your proposal. What they do have the ability to do is if they require something as part of their review. Um, and if you don't want to do it and we don't want to do it, we can still do what you want. It's just going to take another vote. Functionally, the county planning department gets one vote here. Through this process. So you don't have to show up. If they don't like something, they can tell you to do something. If you don't want to do it, that just requires this board to have five votes to pass it without it. If you decide to move forward that way. And we want and we're okay with that, which. There's no, I don't know what's going to happen, so there's no guarantee of that. But I don't want you to think that it's going to be a duplicate process like this. They can't deny it and it's not going to be a full process. They're just going to hear it. Give us a recommendation and then what we do with it depends on what we want to do with it between you and us. And if we both don't want to do it, it'll force another vote. That's it.
So you got to get to Bill. Get me a new.
Yeah, I'll get all this taken care of and.
We'll take care of making the submission to the county. It goes to the county. They'll let us know. What they want done. Uh Jennifer also had a and the board, don't go yet. The board may have some other comments. Jennifer, you had another comment about um. Uh, the dumpster.
Yes, we spoke about that. I have that on the list. I'll make sure to remind you. Um, the last item that I have is escrow. So I think we wanted to ask for a little bit more escrow.
So I think you already paid a fee to the uh building department. When you go through the planning board. Planning board uh planner has to write up a decision. In this case, it's it'll take a lot of time. But he has to get paid. We don't get paid, but the planner does. So I'm going to ask you for escrow of two hundred and fifty dollars. Whatever we don't use, you get that.
So you need to drop it. Check off to Alyssa.
You need, yeah, you need a check. Give it to Alyssa. And it's two fifty. So Stacy. Let's vote. We have to vote on that. We should vote on that. So. Um, I'll entertain a motion to ask for escrow for Mr. Pinker's of two fifty. Hans makes the motion.
I'll second.
Give a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I had a chair from side. So six to one on absence. Anybody have anything else? Zorian?
Uh. My notice, I could get your plan and plan of the building. And uh also. Application, how many people going to be there and justify parking? Now.
We mentioned the parking.
Uh.
Bill has to put the parking number, mark up the parking on the map.
And and justify justify some. How many spaces? Required.
Do we need?
You've got, you've got striped parking there, right?
I started that. I just.
Yeah. The I I it's just a quick review. I. The golf simulators were never given a use classification that I can see in the record. But the best guess is what it is. The parking standard for that use is identical to what's required for office space. So. Presumably, whatever, where'd you get that approved? Two years, three years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years.
Like ten spaces there or something, right?
And it's been.
And not.
Beauty salon had the same amount. Yeah, it's like thirteen spots. You're nine foot by eighteen are legal.
Is it one? Yeah, I know. I understand. I mean, I understand. It's going to be a statement somewhere.
So the map needs to um. Show the thirteen spaces plus one ADA. Is that?
Yeah, show it on the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And basically.
Zorian, I didn't understand the first comment you made about the building.
Architecture, don't we look at? It usually was inside.
Oh, yeah.
Arrangement of inside.
We've sometimes asked for the inside. Do we want him to outline what's on the inside?
Isn't it part of the now? Well.
Anybody want to? Zorian seems to want to. I don't want to.
I I just wanted to kind of identical process for everybody. This one they want, another one they don't. I I'm not quite following. Or.
Not understanding of the occupancy, I think is what you're looking.
Yeah.
It just not.
You know, some of these things that we're asking for are the job of the building department.
Yeah.
Right? And if we're going to start having people lay out. Architecturally interior space, that's not our expertise.
It's a single use, right? So it's it's not like the florist that was sharing a space with a another.
You know, things like uh entrance and exits, that's all the building department. It should be on there.
Right. And uh. You know, they. Need to ask for waivers, like a. Side surface profile really not needed. I'm just following what was written in the code.
Are you saying that we need waivers?
Yeah.
Why do we need waivers?
So he doesn't have to show profile of the. Of the site.
No. What do we need a waiver for? We're not asking for it.
Maybe asking.
No, what I try to say is that the court requires them to provide certain. Certain data when they apply a special use permit. So we basically saying, no, you don't need it. Because. It was done. It's not, nothing changed from previous time.
So.
That's essentially that. Asking to.
So you're asking him to do. A profile of the building?
No, I don't. What they're saying.
Dave, do we need a waiver?
Well. You've got a list of things. They're supposed to be on the map.
That's what I'm reporting.
The site plan, as it called. I I don't know at this point if we're ready to go through all of this. Because I would suggest you just get a. Work with Bill. And.
Yeah.
And we'll see what we get.
And when you speak with Bill and have him review it. Um, if you know, we're talking about waivers, there may be things that the code requires that we would be willing to waive. And so Bill can put together those requests and we could consider them imposed on November tenth at that meeting.
I really think I'll never follow you. I don't know.
That's fine. You can have reach out to us.
Yeah, I'm gone.
What I suggest you do is have him call me.
Yeah.
He knows what has to be done. And as simple as this thing is, but it's not as simple. If it hadn't been done properly the first time around, it would have been the. It wouldn't be here perhaps. And then we got to worry about signage.
Yes, and I I have a list of items. We'll transmit them to you so you can share it with Bill so you can have that.
Everyone's seen that sign on the road. Is that legal?
I think it's probably, I don't.
It's been there for.
The code.
Twenty years.
The the code talks about how big signs are supposed to be with them. I I don't know what's theirs.
Yep.
Just provide the sign. Size.
That's four-way.
Yeah.
Okay.
You may want to have Bill come to the next meeting.
Keep up with them.
Well, he'll come if you pay him.
Yeah, I gotta pay him. Okay.
The flip side of it, Tom, is that we're going to we're going to be going back and forth in circles.
No.
I mean, Zorian's points are correct. We're trying to make it. It's only it's a change of views, but it's technically his points are correct. And not. You need profiles, you need proper signage. Look at the building. What does the building look like from the road, right? The square, to see the profile of the building from the road, a picture of that or a diagram of that is called profile. The code requires that. It requires that there be lighting shown on the building. The code requires that the signage be shown in the building. As Dave mentioned. You're probably going to have to channelize the traffic, which I know you didn't have to do the last time, but you may have to do it this time. If the county says you have to do it. We have the ability to say, no. You're okay with it, but we're not at that point yet. Um. So sometimes when you come in here for something simple, it's not as simple as you as we would might, you might want it. So I recommend that you might want to have Bill come in the next time. And Jennifer, when Bill comes to me, I'm going to.
Yeah, you can send it away.
You're sending me over. You've got all the. Okay.
Let me have him call you.
Just a question. Do you uh what are you doing anything down the back there anymore? Is that just parking?
No, it's just I got a shop down.
Yeah.
And the fuel tanks, some of you had asked about the fuel tanks. You're telling me there's no fuel tanks anywhere in that property? How?
They've been out for thirty-five years.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
As usual. Yeah, I don't know. I'm good.
Um. You can get your.
It's in the email.
I have your information in Munich lab, and so I can send you an email of information.
Please do.
Sound good?
Crazy good. I don't want to listen to it. It's part of it.
Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you, Matt?
I'm good.
How are you, Mr. Hoffman? I'm just waiting for. And here we go. Um, so. Matt, you wanna present what you, what is your order?
So I'm here on behalf of James Hoffman. He's the property owner at twenty five Brazil Heights Road. Um, it is a eight point eight point nine one acre property in the R two zoning district. Um, there's existing house towards the front. And he's proposing to subdivide and put a house on the rear portion of the lot. It's it's a private road, so that's uh kind of the crux of his thoughts.
So I have a couple of things, but then I'm gonna go around uh with the board making comments. The two items, Matt, I mentioned these to you already, the map that Dave us versus the, what's on uh the parcel viewer. Parcel viewer has it as eight point nine one acres.
You did that, you did a survey done, right?
Yeah.
So the survey is always.
But the survey only comes up to eight point six. Each of the lots, one of the lots is um I can't read my copy, one of the lots, lots looks like six point four three. And the other lot is two point one seven, that only adds up to eight point six. Your map, though, you picked up the note, uh, the material from the parcel viewer. And you have eight point nine one, so the, the sum of the parts doesn't equal the whole. So you're gonna take a look at that? Unless I got it all wrong, but I think that's. And then the survey map from John Post, uh, that James gave, gave us many months ago.
That was earlier.
That we. That adds up to eight point.
I remember what I did here, but I might have excluded the flat, or the whole portion of the lot. When I wrote the acres up, all of it.
Take a look at it.
Very simple.
Okay. The only other item I have, and then we'll go around the table. The policy we have here, um, and I did go through the deed, by the way. Um, the deed guarantees um access, not even to Brazil Road. It guarantees access by way of Scroon Hill Road, which presumably they meant to say Scroon Hill Road, Brazil Road comes off of Scroon Hill Road. So it does give rights of passage, if you would, to the property owners of this property uh to Scroon Hill Road, again, presumably through Brazil Road. But it's been the policy of this board in the past to yeah, you've got the one lot, you can use the road, but to ask for, since it's a private road, to ask for a road maintenance agreement. And beyond which, ask the other members of the Road Maintenance Association for permission to to put a second lot, a second official lot. Um, exiting out onto Brazil Road. We've done it a number of times if the board remembers, in fact, one time we did it. Um, and the applicant decided not to go forward, for whatever reason, it was um Gilda Mancini Children's Trust, it was out by Ginger Road. It was a four lot subdivision, and they decided not to do it when we requested that the other members of the Road Maintenance uh Association, wherever it's quelled in this case, has to give permission for there to be a second lot. So we're gonna need that in writing. And then, of course, we need a road maintenance agreement, meant that um the gentleman would draw up showing that he will be part of this Road Maintenance Association. So unless we can get that, we we really can't go forward. Why, we recommend we don't go forward. Because we would probably tonight let Dave Church uh do a write-up on this to determine if there's any other issues on the property. It may or may not be. I don't see any wetlands, the lot is relatively flatted, slopes to the back gently. Um, so I don't see any other issues. But normally, what we would do is go around the table, any other issues, Dave would do a write-up, he'd have it within a week or two, we'd get you to come back. But the bottom line is, you need to prove to us that you, the rest of the homeowners on this private road are willing to give you the access for the second lot.
Right, well, I do know that there's not a road agreement. I've been through all the deed, some board is not giving some, county records for um and I reached out to people that I know um on the road, that there's not a road agreement, my understanding is they don't want one. There are only, there are nineteen lots on this road, there's only four that are owned or occupied, seven are vacant. Uh, one owner owns four lots, one of which is vacant, one owner owns three lots, they're non-resident. Uh, one new resident has access from Shroom Hill. So my understanding is they're not interested, as far as I know, in a road maintenance agreement. A lot of these residents have been here on this road for a long time, they just not interested. So if it needs a road agreement, I mean, I'm pretty sure that I would go forward because they won't agree to that. Um, just putting that out there, so, and second, I guess then my question would be yeah, if there's a way forward, if they have, if some of them have to approve it. But again, I don't know with their seeing so many vacant lots and not very many people that live on the road. You know, what, what the criteria would be, even if they were to agree to say, yes, we can subdivide that, how many people, who would be able to, you know, weigh in on that?
The lots that are owned by, you just mentioned that one person owned four lots, one opened, owns three, are they, they have houses on them, or they just open?
Uh, one, from the county records, one uh resident has a house on, on it and seems to live, as far as I know, lives on the road and they own four lots at the end. So I believe that they're the main people who do road maintenance, as if it were a driveway. Um, nobody's answered me when I've asked. I mean, I haven't done an extensive survey, cause this came up more recently, I haven't written everyone a letter and said, please tell me who plowed the road. I've asked the person I knew and they didn't answer me. Uh.
So the reason is, I understand that, you you know, on on road maintenance agreement, we kind of check the box, do you have one?
Right.
The reason for beyond checking the box is to absolve the town in any fashion from having to worry about it, number one. To ensure, number two, that they're, because part of the road maintenance agreement talks about the road being clear for emergency vehicles. So either you're occupying one of the um lots or you're renting it, and the other lot you might be selling it. Right, you need to make sure, and we wanna make sure that you make sure that the road is maintained so that emergency vehicles can get there.
Right.
Fire trucks, ambulances, whatever.
Right.
Um, so I've never come across, well, because we haven't done a lot of this, but I've never come across a situation where there isn't a road maintenance agreement on an existing private road, there's always something, it may be very ad hoc.
I mean, there, there may be something that they have, but there's no, there's nothing official in any documents. Um.
Nothing in the documents, have you asked them whether they had, who maintains the roads?
I asked the person that I knew, and they said they didn't answer. Said, and and also I've been, I've owned the property for two years and I've talked to people, they know, and I you know, I should have been aggressive, like, you know, but since no one was asking me for money to plow, I kind of let it go, which now I regret.
So it gets plowed.
It seems to be plowed, I mean.
So somebody's got a truck with a.
Somebody, I mean, so my, I believe they just considered a driveway. Uh, again, a lot of these people have lived there for over ten years, twenty years.
So the only situation that um that I remember, do you all remember the um what was Mark's project, project, Chrome Road, not Chrome Road? Um, Mark Grasso's project, Tarragon? No, Tarragon Road. He didn't, he didn't wanna modify the RMA. It sounded like the other residents on the road didn't wanna modify it either. So he stuck, simply stuck something in the deed, the property deeds of the two lots that he was putting up, which indicated that the responsibility the town had no responsibility for the road maintenance.
Right.
And also that they would guarantee that the road would be maintained in such a fashion to allow for emergency vehicles, that's how I recall us doing it, but I don't I have to do some research.
I recall, we had a conversation, I didn't know it's something. The other one, the other project, I think that didn't have an RMA was the Stonehouse Tavern, the back that subdivision, they didn't have a.
Sandal. I was deliberately forgetting about that one. Um, you're right. Um, our attorney disappeared at the moment that I needed him, but Dave, do you have any thoughts?
He's in charge for this one. On that, well, that was an existing home. Right, it was existing.
Yes, you're right, there was some.
Existing mobile homes.
You're right.
Manufactured homes, sorry.
Manufactured.
Um, I, was that the distinguishing feature that?
I think you're right, I think it's because there was somebody arguing over there.
Yeah, well, there's all sorts of things that.
But the Crumb Road is a good example.
Yeah, whatever, then it was Tarragon Road, it was two lot subdivision. So Dave, um, what do we do in a situation where it doesn't appear to be an existing road maintenance association of any sort? Or at least they don't.
Maintenance Association?
Agreement.
Agreement. That exists. We would normally say, well, you gotta get, you have to be part of the Road Maintenance Association or the Road Maintenance Agreement. At the very least, you need to get permission from the other members of the, that live on the private road uh to put this second lot in, the rights only are carried by the lot that's eight point nine one. The other lot presumably is not, was not intended to be subdivided back there, or else they would have. Um.
Is it, uh, unfortunately, I was, I'm doing something else. There's a cooperative agreement now between the current lot owner and other lot owners?
No, we can't find, no.
Something.
We don't know who's plowing and maybe just ad hoc.
It's just the residents considering it as if it's.
Does access depend, well, access ultimately is gonna, ultimately, they, this is a private road. Some people have to cooperate, even if it's only the two lots that are before us, but there's one lot now being subdivided into two. These lots are gonna have to cooperate, right?
Um, well.
No.
No, because both driveways are gonna dump out onto the private road. There's nothing that they have to cooperate on, one's gonna, they're both gonna plow their own driveway, what happens when they get out to the private road?
Well, just, they have to cooperate on the private road.
The tourism?
Currently, there's one house that has access to the private road.
Correct.
What provides that access?
Oh. His driveway add on to Brazil Road.
Legally, what provides him the ability to use the private road? Does he own it?
It's in the.
Private road, no, it's in its deed.
Yeah, the deed says.
So your, your deed gives you a right to use the private road.
Right, I believe, I've looked at all the deeds, they all say.
Do you have, do you have any responsibilities based on that?
No.
You don't have to pay for it, you don't have to plow, you just have a right to use, you have a private easement.
Right, in ingress and egress.
Well, under sort of classic, I I have to look this up, but under classic law, that road exists to provide access or that easement, if I I'm just, I'm seeing deed, but that easement's gonna provide access to this property. So the question becomes, well, why if we use the property more intensely by subdividing it, will it still provide access? And as far as I know, as as a legal matter, the answer is yes, but that kind of goes back to, I haven't looked it up, so that goes back to sort of legal theory. I'd have to look that, look up that situation. I can think that if this was being subdivided more intensely, there would be a problem, because you'd have a lot of users, how many, how many, who, who, who maintains the private road?
That's what we were saying, we, we don't know, no one has told me.
How many other private properties have access to?
There are nineteen lots, but only four full-time residents that I've asked or taken.
Nineteen lots, four full-time residents, fifteen part-time residents?
No, there's seven vacant properties.
So basically, somewhere between four and quick subtraction, but well, property.
Some of them received, well, some of them are manufactured housing, I don't know if they, I don't know if they're occupied.
But somebody's plowing the road.
Someone is plowing the road.
And maintaining it.
It's, yes, it's maintained.
You know what?
It's got a large complex on it.
There's a large complex.
There's a large multi.
You know, this is only, this is only one extra lot, so then nobody, I'm getting practical, they may not care, but at some point, if it was a five lot subdivision, ten lot subdivision, people are gonna start caring. So, um.
And I, I can weigh in on this a little bit, because we did have a fire in the road, and the road is not in great shape.
Of course not.
It was, yeah. Access in and out was a challenge. On that.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's also an extension of, I don't know where Brazil Heights.
I'm counting that as their three lots, yeah, I'm counting that.
Setting aside the difficulty of getting fire equipment and if for, for uh a private car, regular automobile, does the road pose challenges?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's hot old road.
And is it?
Yeah, I'd say.
It's a beat up road.
Yeah.
The road is beat up.
Well, what I'm concerned with, that's this twenty twenty five, five or six or seven or eight or nine years. If it's not maintained by somebody who's, you know, got the job and resources to do it, but it's gonna get worse and, you know, become, you know. Um, it's pot hold now, and if you can't get the fire trucks in now, in ten years, can you get Subaru in?
I wouldn't say that it's a pot hold, to be honest, I mean, it's a flat road, it's just, it's basically one lane.
I think, well, I think the real, in my mind, uh, the
Yeah.
The bigger issue is uh the safety purposes, us approving. The one lot is fine, you have those right, the deed says you have those rights. But to approve another lot, or to approve another lot where it seems sketchy, I'll use that word, access for emergency vehicles. Not that they won't get in there, but they may be delayed in some fashion, particularly if there's bad weather, snow or ice.
Rick, they've mentioned that, you know, he says the road itself is a private lot. So do you have knowledge that this is actually being maintained by somebody, or is it just your assumption that you're just relying on somebody else to do it?
I mean, I've owned the property for two years, I've been in the area, and I've visited the property during the winters. I can access the property.
So in other words, few knowledge, it's being plowed in the winter, which gives you access, but you don't have any other personal knowledge?
Thing that I have knowledge of, I haven't seen any.
So somebody's plowing.
I think there's a full-time resident at the end of the road.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that's my.
So they're, they're probably gonna plow it to give themselves access, but they may not be grading it every, every, you know, couple year or two to make sure that it stays in some kind.
They're also plowing it, but if they go away, if they pass away, they go away, then I could so my, my sense is, I mean, that you have a right to build, there is a house on the lot already, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're renovating it, as I understand, okay, so, I mean, that's, that is what it is. But to put another house on this, on this lot, even though zoning wise it's permitted, there's enough lot, lot size. I just can't see giving permission without knowing how are you gonna get emergency vehicles in there, and how are you gonna maintain the road? If it was a town road, it'd be, we wouldn't be talking.
Ultimately, this is a town problem, right? Do you have, you have a private, you have a road that's a private lot that nobody's really maintaining except for the one person who's there year round and needs.
It is a little bit, it is a little bit about that, the Alan Linda project and the um.
I mean, are there any chance at open time that this doesn't become a problem?
The town is not taking over private roads as a matter of.
Bunch of citizens down there.
Question?
Yep.
Um, how, uh, well, I live nearby, so I'm familiar, I know people that live back there.
Okay.
Um, I don't know how much road there is between here and Shroom Hill. But what if you were willing, I don't know if the board would be amenable to this, but what if you were willing to commit to maintaining that portion of the road as part of the subdivision? So you don't have to answer right now.
Sure.
But I don't know, I feel like that's something I.
At this point, is he, I mean, he has, he has, he has an access easement over it, but he doesn't have, he doesn't have the right, I mean, if he was to bring out.
You should confirm that.
Well, but he'd need that.
You know, assuming that he has the rights.
Assuming the landowners are findable.
Assuming he has the legal right to maintain it.
No, he has a legal right of access over it, he doesn't have, unless it's something different, he doesn't have the right to maintain it.
But presumably, you've been entering an agreement to someone.
If you can find them, yeah.
All right, so.
And he could do that.
I'm just trying to find a way to navigate.
Why don't we do this? Let's not, I mean, there's a lot of different points to do it. You have a lawyer?
I appreciate that. Uh, I, I don't have a lawyer working on this right now.
And what is the board thinking? Cause in my mind, I don't think this is, this is an on-starter, that's what I'm.
I, I think he needs to go around neighborhood again, and later basically try to tell them this, we need to have a road agreement.
Right.
And see, you know, maybe somebody will reply.
I mean, I.
If not, then.
Yeah, that's, I guess I just wanted an answer, if there is a way forward, assuming that there's no road agreement, or that they don't answer, which is my kind of assumption that that would be what would happen, because a lot of people don't live on the road.
Right, but you have a dress, you can.
I can try, but yeah.
Right? Because eventually, they.
Any other.
They're gonna use the property then.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, I mean, you try, you know, casually, it sounds too reach out to people, but I think you've gotta make that list of all the landowners on it.
I also would assume that the. Would be interested kind of to, you know.
The person.
Would only plows the road, so takes kind of care of that place.
I, yeah, possibly. I mean, I can certainly reach out to people, I guess my question would be, if they don't answer, then do I, you know, am I coming back? If I don't hear from them, or if you're saying there's no way forward, that's, that's fine.
I think, I think what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Because it is a matter of safety, right?
Yeah.
And if we give the approval, we're kind of saying, everything is being done according to oil, mainly the road's gonna be maintained, oh, it sounds like it's not. So unless you find a way to maintain this road, a legal way to do it, whether that's, I don't know what that is. Uh, I don't see this board approving um what's being proposed.
The key.
And that being the case, that being the case, there's no reason for Dave Church to go any further with his analysis. Matt, that's just gonna cost.
It's fine with me, I mean, there's not much, really, honestly, for him to do, it's just this road maintenance agreement.
I think it's, you know, it's ultimately, it's gonna lead to conflict if there isn't anything done there. Because, because, you know, eventually that guy, whoever is following the road or whatever is gonna say, why am I following this road for fourteen other lots and nobody ever tries to, you know?
Right, well, I think they would rather just say that they live there. But what, just so I'm clear, what would I, what am I, I'm just asking, is there a road agreement, or would you agree to what?
If, if there's a road, a sample of a road agreement?
I know, I'm asking the other owners, I just would like to be clear.
Would you, the, the single thing you need right now, even, I mean, it'd be great to get the other owners involved, and that would be the fairest thing and the best, but what Mr. Church indicated is that that road is a separate lot. Meaning that whoever, that there's an owner of that road that may not be, and perhaps something can probably isn't one of the lot owners. And that's the person you need to give you the right to maintain the road. You just need, without it, without it, you can't get a road maintenance agreement, you have to have an agreement with the landowner for starters. Usually, the landowner is owned jointly or something like that. Then if you can get that agreement, then it's time to go talk to your neighbors and say, can we all pitch in on this? If, if you get.
Okay, that road has a separate SBL number?
Looks like from Public Road for a while, it's a separate parcel. And then back there where there's the complex, uh, must be a year-round resident that maybe maintaining it with several buildings.
There's a farm back there.
It looks like it's the road, the road is some.
It looks like it's the road, the road at some point becomes part of another parcel of land. So, the, I'm just going by the old parcel viewer, this is not a title search.
Right.
I, it, the parcel viewer shows the road is a separate lot.
You're gonna need to find the title owner of the, of the.
Does that show, does it show, are you on?
Doesn't show a number, doesn't show an owner.
Yeah, so it looks like a town road essentially would, you know, on parcel viewers, but it doesn't have the information on the owner of the road.
I'm acknowledging my lack of knowledge on this. The map, the map shows a separate parcel.
A smart man.
You, you gotta, you gotta figure out who owns the road.
Okay, yeah.
That's right. We said, so if it's a town, great, but if it's not, ultimately, who owns the road and begin to get an agreement with that person? Then if you can, and if, if it doesn't exist, then there may be some issues that, you know, ultimately, now, something has to be done because it's gonna cause problems.
Right.
But then, um, if you can, if you can identify that person and they're willing to grant the maintenance agreement, which they probably would be, um, if you're willing to do it, then it's, then you can talk to your neighbors and see whether they're willing to pitch in. And everybody can agree, and if they're not, then you can decide whether you wanna go forward on your own.
Now, with that, with just one follow-up question, thank you all for that. Um, would, if, if I do identify that there's one owner of the road, and they say, yes, you can, I will give you permission to maintain it, or put that in your deed and the, and the subdivision, would that be, then do I need the other owners?
No.
So I wouldn't need.
You don't, they, they might, I mean, then they've got a little issue.
But, but I would not need.
If you want to maintain, if you have that access to that road, you, you, you have um, uh, permission to maintain it and you're willing to maintain it. But I, I think you, you can secure access to your parcel in terms of the subdivision as well. And you'll be the person responsible for maintenance.
I'm gonna practice law without, without a license, but it means that all the way from your.
Right.
From one end to the other, where Skroon Hill Road is.
Right.
If you're willing to negotiate with whoever owns that, that you'll maintain it, then that's gotta be put into a deed.
Deed, right.
Either for the two houses, that you're, you know, the one plus the other one.
Right.
Um, and they're gonna be in the future, whoever those owners are, travels with the, with the land, they're gonna be responsible forever and for forever, never, never, maintaining that road, whatever that means.
Well, it's up to, I mean, they want, if he wants one lot to have the responsibility or other.
Dave, obviously, but the point is, forever and ever and ever, one or both of those lots is gonna happen.
I, I would suggest you go to the end of the road and start there.
Well, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's.
But they would be interested to share the course of.
I think they know the first side.
Okay, so, um, this would be a great course in, in legal. So obviously, so James, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, it is what it is.
Perfect sense, thanks.
But, uh.
Uh, I'm sorry, I have a.
You have one.
That county resource map or natural resource map turns it as a possible wetland. Uh, and it's right there where you identify that, uh, uh, group A, soil, M T B. Which is, uh, those soils have very low infiltration rates when thoroughly wetted. So, but it's possible, so I don't know, if, if you want to destroy it or.
So we're not doing anything in that M T B, that's.
Right, so maybe you show, show the possible wetland and, and in the buffer.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I didn't see that, but I'm, I'm good.
Gonna solve the road first.
Yeah, we'll see if that's a very.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, James.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, next up. Uh, Raph Tov.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Um. Osha, how are you? Joel, how are you? Mike, how are you? Um. So a lot, lot has been quite a bit going on in the background with this project. Um, and also a lot going on in terms of letters that I've been receiving. Most of which I've been able to get out to the board, although I received two letters today from various residents. Uh, well, actually, three in the last three or four days. Um, two of them you have, but one of those two was recent today, so you may not have it. And then the other one came, um, right before I left to come down here, so there's three letters you may or may not have. I've tried to publish at least two of them. And in your package, there's one there dated September twenty-sixth. Just want you to have all the letters, presumably, you've seen all the others. September twenty-sixth, six is from Maureen Lindstrom, if you look at the last page, she signed it. Then there's another, um, email dated September twenty-ninth today, at fifteen twenty-nine, which would be three twenty-nine today, and it's from Mr. Court, right? Or an entry of court, right, Mr. Court writes here, right? Okay, so there is that letter, and then there was also a letter from, um.
Chelsea.
Andrew, Chelsea, Chelsea, Chelsea's here, sorry.
Okay.
Um, and that had to do with visuals, I wasn't able to publish that letter, but it is on. I think I did send it out. I just wasn't able to. I just wasn't able to print it out. In any case, we'll, we'll get to that in a little, those in a little bit, so let me just tell you what else has been going on. Uh, myself, Dave Church, um, Dave Roberts. Peter, were you there? I don't remember.
Yeah.
Okay. We met with the applicant. Who else? Oh, Greg, thank you, Greg. We met with the applicant on a number of issues, most specifically was on the, um, the visuals having to do with the. Visuals having to do with the, um, with the project, the way the project looked. And many of the letters had to do with the size of the building, it's obviously fifty thousand square feet is what was being proposed. And subsequently, and there's a picture at your, your spot. Um, and there are some copies in the back, and the public, if they wanna take some. The applicant came back and made some changes to what they originally proposed, they proposed to get rid of ten thousand square feet. And if you look at the bottom of this diagram, um, the building to the left was the way it was originally planned, and then the one to the right on the bottom was the way in which they're proposing, which is to, um, get rid of the, um, a good portion of the left-hand side of the building, left-hand as you're looking at it. They also tried to situate the building in and amongst the plants and the trees up top. Um, then we had a long, we had a discussion about landscaping, which we didn't completely finish, but we'll have to finish at some point, that they were willing to put a lot more landscaping to protect the building, or to shield the building from Cherry Town Road. Uh, they're also, we're gonna bring samples of what the color, I don't know whether you did bring the color samples. So they brought color samples because the renderings just seemed to be stark white. And apparently, they, um, it's not a stark white, but the, the pictures don't do it justice, so I said, well, bring the actual renderings, the actual brick or whatever, uh, so we could take a look at it. And there was also, um, I mentioned that the windows are too big, in my mind, they just, they just stalk, it's almost brutal. Brutalist architecture is the term I use, not in a negative way, but just, it just smacks you right smack dab in the, in the middle of the face. So they did decrease the size of the windows, okay? So there were a number of things that, that the applicant agreed to do, that's just by way of history. Um, the other thing that the applicant did, and it's in, you have in your package, a, um, narrative. Um, part of it is a, a new narrative that, um, Mike Colis put together, the first two pages, front and back. That narrative talks about the changes to the architecture, and then on page three, if you remember, I've been referring to the document that Zorian and I put together dated September third, which was a summary of all of the public comments over the last two or three months, remember this project has been on the public hearing schedule since June the ninth, so that's July, August, September, it's been on public hearing status for three months. So Zorin and I took all of the comments that we could find by the public, either letters, emails, uh, public statements, things that we've asked for, and I put them all together, with Zorian's help, I put them all together in a letter of September third, and Joel responded to them, and I got his response to all of them, um, this past Friday, and the response is here in this document that starts with narrative summary. Um, so, what I wanted to do tonight, with the board's permission, is to go through, let them present the new architecturals. And I don't know whether you all are ready or not, uh, to do that, but, uh, to do that, or we can wait till the end of the meeting, if you're waiting for some more stuff to come, I think you are.
Yeah.
Okay. And what the board would do is to go through the comments from the September third memo, and whatever other issues, uh, may have been missed, and actually go through the questions. And I have the answers here, I wanna see if the board is satisfied with the answers that were given to us by, by the applicant. Um, again, the elephant on the table has always been the size of the building, and what I can, that what I can offer with the applicant is all. Is ten thousand square feet less, what's there?
Talking of answers that are written here.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Are you talking about answers that written here?
I'm talking about this memo here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it says narrative summary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Rick.
So.
Uh, Rick, you also, the applicant agreed to put the mechanicals, remove them from the roof.
Yes, thank you.
And put them down on the ground, on the camp side, not the roadside, mitigate any additional height concerns as well as any noise, uh, impacts that they're down.
I forgot about that, and we've been picking that around for a while, and they, we, uh, they agreed to do that. Um, oh, there's one other piece that, um, that was, I'm concerned with, they gave us a SWIP, I think we got the SWIP two weeks ago. And Greg went through it, I got the letter from Greg today, um. I don't think I have copies of it, but it is out there on Indian Collab, so I did want Greg to go through the SWIP. There's lots of bits and pieces, little pieces that have to be fixed, but there's one large item that Greg was concerned with. And that was the water overflow, water flow from the building. Um, from what Greg tells me, the water is gonna flow onto Cherry Town Road as opposed to the natural contour of it, of the land currently, which is to the back, towards the pond, which if you look at the building, back and to the left. So, that's, that's not gonna.
Look, we have no objections to anything in Greg's memo, and when we had a field meeting to look at the site, we, we kinda came into agreement that the water should go towards the ponds, and that'll be corrected on the. It's doable? Submission. It's doable? It's, it's doable, it's not a problem.
Okay, that's the end of that, good.
It's a natural drainage path.
Yeah.
So I, I read his memo this, uh, this afternoon, I, I have no objection to anything he states.
So everything that Greg has in this memo, Mike, you're in agreement with?
We're in agreement with him, with this.
No, with everything.
Sorry?
With everything, that wasn't the only thing he had in the memo.
Well, with the SWIP concern, right?
Yeah, with the SWIP.
So, no, no.
You're okay.
I didn't have any concern to anything Greg sent in the memo.
Good memo, Greg. All right, so now let's deal with, um, and that's, and would have any question about that, you may or may not have had to ask a reader. About the SWIP only.
Seems like a lot of things to do yet.
Well, a lot, a lot of. Yeah, with, with the SWIP document itself, a lot of them are kind of administrative, I mean, they're not major. The two things that were significant were the, um, drainage patterns and the, uh, the area disturb. So I think, I think the, the one thing is, I'd like to see the area disturbance for the new building to be more, um, realistic, because I think it will be more than an acre. But for the other two buildings that were previously improved, those were on areas that were previously impervious. So I don't see there needing to be, um, anything done with those. But I do believe that this is more than an acre of disturbance, if you're more conservative with the fact that you're gonna have to get construction equipment around the building to have the area disturbance up close to the building is to me.
No, we agree, cuz one, moving the mechanicals from the roof, now we're occupying new space.
Yep.
So, once again, that, that original design was more of a preliminary with the building, now that we have something more uh, amenable to the, to the applicant and the board, now we can finalize, right?
Good.
So, we, we're not in disagreement with them.
And as part of that, Mike, you know, typically, and I'm not an, an expert of how the D C, D E C handles these things, but you need, you're gonna need a, a permit from the D E C because you're doing a SWIP, right? You need a speeding permit, right? Um, you know, the ability for the D E C to manage all these projects and to watch them um, is limited, um, as of late, from what I can see. And we only have one building inspector here in the, uh, in the town, and he's on time. So watching the construction is gonna, gonna be a, an issue. So what I've done in previous projects, one in particular, is required the applicant to pay for a clerk of the works during the course of construction, so that the construction documents as designed, first of all, approved by our engineer, but second of all, that there's somebody in the field periodically that's checking up, not on you, Mike, but on the contractor.
Yeah.
To make sure everything is done according to oil, so I just wanna mention, that's gonna be part of the, of the final plan.
The SWIP will require, um, at least once a week inspections to, to just address the erosion control, as well as a daily inspection by the, the contractor. The contractor has to have a SWIP qualified person on site. So he does a daily inspection, and typically, the consultant inspectors will come out once a week, perform an inspection, if they need anything changed, revised, or whatever, they'll take care of it at that, at that time. That, that's a requirement of D E C, that we cannot change.
Okay, so what I'd like to see is for our engineer to be the one who's on site. Not the con, not the contractor's engine.
No, he's required to, that's not negotiable.
Right, it's required to be, so they're required to have somebody doing the, the, um, weekly inspection.
Right.
If, then, if you're concerned about D E C's input, I think it's mainly that, that if you want it to be us, but it would be that we would receive those weekly inspections, review them, and then maybe go out there once a month, to confirm that they're doing what they're doing, but not, we wouldn't do the weekly inspection, that would still be. Their.
Legally, I don't think they want the, the, uh, it's a legal requirement to do those inspections.
Okay, why don't we do that?
I'm sure most of them won't have a set problem satisfying anything.
All right, so that's gonna be in the decision when we get to the point of decision.
Right.
That'll be one of the items.
Are we, we starting with this, uh, the revised, uh, that it's not gonna create a problem for other neighbors or anything?
I think if they, if they redirect that stormwater towards the pond, I think that's going to be beneficial for everyone, and then the other feature that they show to the northeast, I think that should be removed. Because those two areas were impervious, and they're, they, they built a building there, but they covered basically the same area, um, and so they're showing some, some stormwater features in the back, but I think that, that what's mean, it's already done. The buildings are there, whatever the stormwater is doing, it's, it's doing, and those areas were previously impervious, I don't think anything needs to be done with those.
Okay, okay. So I think we have an agreement then with Greg's comments relative to SWIP, we just need to get it redone, get your document redone, so Greg can say it's, it's good, all right? When do you think you'll have that redone?
Well, uh, uh, we'll try to get it done before the next meeting, it shouldn't be a problem.
Before what?
The next meeting, I don't believe it would be a problem.
Which would be.
Pretty much a, a boilerplate item, you're just basically plugging the information.
Okay, so why don't we make it, uh, October, October fourteenth? All right, so now what I'm gonna do, unless the board has some urgent question, I'm literally gonna go through, starting on page three. I'm gonna go through all of the, uh, items here, and some of them are very, very simple. Um, so it shouldn't take too much time, I hope, Jen?
Um, our Ulster County Planning Board's comments reflected in the document.
Yes, they're at the end of the document on page eleven.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So, um, and Joel, thank you for doing, doing this, it was. Um, took you, it took a while, but I was happy to, with the results in terms of getting everything encapsulated. So let's go through. So let's go through page three. The first one had to do with some zoning issue from way back when and. Um it was more on us. So the zone where this building is is going is off, Mike. We had it miscategorize as A three, so that's been taken care of. And Mike, all the maps need to be changed to reflect that and our decision whenever it comes, same thing. To the Ulster County Planning Board, we took care of that. So um we did have a discussion with the app that we'll get to it in a little while on page eleven. Notice of hearing is required to be sent over with Lawrence or Wausau Town Clerk. We will take care of that. That's because of the um. The contiguous nature of the project to Wausau. Um it was done originally. It'll continue to be done. Um a rendering should be required, namely architectural plans. Um they have been done. And we'll need final architecturals, but I'm considering this to be the latest in terms of the renderings. You know, questions, or?
Yeah, I was done at the ground. I said, to proposal, we don't have any details, site plan, nothing.
We'll have all those, right? You do have. You should have their latest site point. He gave a recent supplement in the file.
Today?
It's just the first page. It's just the first page for reference purposes.
Today?
I don't know what the date on it is. I think it was Friday's date. Or maybe it's an old one. Mike, the point is. Before we. You know, we need everything to be resubmitted. And the previous. Plans had the general map, which is the one that Zarian is looking at. It would have a page in no particular order, an architectural page, it would have a landscaping page, it would have a. Um a SWIP page, drainage page, um. Eight, nine, ten pages, um including architectural renderings, Mike, of the building. You gave it to us once before, but that was going back three, four, five months. Something else?
Yes, Rick. Where is the board? I think you have to stick to our rules that also made of come two weeks. Previously, previously.
You're right, Zarian. We've blown through it. We've blown through it for quite a while with this project, you know, because it is so large. So. What's your, what's your question?
My question is.
Sorry.
Applicants submit the documents two, three days before the meeting. We volunteer once. Some of them, some of us have a full-time jobs. It leads to half hazard review of the project. That's a.
Okay, so it's half hazard. If in your mind it's half hazard, is anybody else feel it's half hazard?
I I I agree that we need to hold, at some point we need to hold a line here. In terms of, you know, when applicants get information in the board.
Mm-hmm.
And I I know that, you know, we've had a the year of really, you know, trying to catch up on. On projects and and get on top of things, but also trying to facilitate uh applicants getting their projects through. I think it's really important to, and you know, we need to transition to a place where we really get the information. That there so we can have a good look at.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, I would agree with you.
I think it's, you know, it's the most professional way to.
Okay. So we've been, uh, we, the applicant knows we've been bending overboard for you. And the members of the board are correct, something the night of the of the project just doesn't uh just doesn't hack it. On the other hand, some of the, some of the mishaps have been because of the lack of secretary within what knows, right? For seven months. Um and tonight, we're not, we're not looking at any plans. To your point, we're not looking at any plans. I mean, if you want to, you have a very generalized one there. What we're looking at are the answers to the document that we put together. Um and yes, that didn't come in until Friday. Um. If the board wants to vote to put this aside to the next meeting. Anybody want to do that?
No, we are gonna have a further, cause I I I agree that, you know, sometimes it's hard to keep up with things that are coming in the last three, four days.
Yeah.
Uh you know, with uh. I know we all wanna be current, have the date, have a. I informed discussion and it's hard sometimes when the guy butters the day of um that I refer to, so.
So uh hopefully applicant has heard, and I know you guys wanna do it quickly. We did get a letter from the board of your board of directors also. Um as I've told you before, there are some timeframe that we should be operating on it. So we'll, I'll try to do a better job with getting it earlier to the board. So are you okay, all okay with um going through this?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, number four, uh the rendering. So, Mike, we're gonna need full renderings when we get closer to uh. Being able to make a decision. And we're gonna need the two weeks before. Um. And Mike, you know what? Renderings means, right? Elevations, the all those pages I mentioned, the whole nine yards. Okay, number five, agricultural data statement. Um. That's been done. If you see that in a light print there, number five, agreed and one has been provided. Um the application is required to be reviewed by the Historical Preservation Commission. I don't know about whether on your copy, you can make it out. I can't see it very well on my copy. Can you see it on your copy? Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we did get comments from the Historical Preservation Society. Um anybody wanna make any comments about that? Alright, the next one, uh on the next page, page four. The addition of a project structure of such size, given the proximity to a historic site agriculture use. In a relatively rural remote area of the town in the site should warrant the application to be classified as type one. It is a type one. But I wanted to include that. So did, we did type this as type one. Dave, check. Um. Needs of balance, the applicant's needs versus the town's desires and code should be reviewed and achieved. Uh section one forty twenty C and et cetera has to do with whether or not the project is uh consistent. It's the commercial standards portion of the code, whether or not the project is consistent with the uh the look and the feel of the area. If you remember from the Historical Preservation Preservation um Committee. They indicated some concern that it wasn't, it was large. And it wasn't particularly consistent with the uh with the surrounding neighborhood. So that's something to consider when we get to the point of doing the determination of significance. Anybody have any comments on that?
Maybe I'll jump in again, but uh I don't have any comments. And I will start from uh the board letter.
You'll start from where?
The board letter. Anyway, the board letter states about footprint reduction. Footprint reduction.
Footprint.
Footprint.
But nothing is reduced as far as a footprint and 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 it's built in your proposal. It's only. Uh floor and elevation. So where's the footprint reduction?
The uh historical committee um has the ability to recommend. If this board wants to insist, assist, insist on a footprint reduction, then the board will have to make that as part of its um.
Okay.
Majority motion that you want the footprint reduced. The uh the building size was reduced by ten thousand square feet. That's what the applicant offered. Um. Anybody have any other comments on that?
Well, I think this is one of the things we um addressed when we sat down uh in the meeting uh with the applicants. Which was prior, they showed us the plan of the of the main floor. And uh prior to that, I guess, as a board level, they understood how, uh why the main floor is so large. Uh but then when you look at the uh plan for the building, you understand that um. There's a a reasonable district, you know, of certain square footage for the dining uh components. And then the kitchen is probably larger than you'd normally expect. That a full kitchen plan made out, uh essentially two kitchens, cause this is a kosher kitchen. Um and also there's a couple uh supporting. And celery rooms, uh you know, for admin and so on. So what I'm saying is that when we reviewed that full plan, the size of that.
Yeah, the exact numbers of. But I'm gonna um round number, use some round numbers, five hundred to see five hundred people um at the same time, which was their plan. Um twenty feet per person in this type of an environment. So that's ten thousand square feet, give or take. And then the kitchen itself is another, what do we call it? A ten thousand square feet. So that's how we came up.
A little less, cause you have. Some offices for.
There were also the.
Bathrooms.
Lobbyed areas.
Yeah.
There was bathroom areas. So when we went through it with them, uh came up with twenty thousand square feet of the footprint. Satisfied what they wanted to do.
Can they, can they relocate those offices? Does the space that they were created, you know?
My recollection was that there were four offices. If they eliminated those offices.
No, it's pretty normal.
That's not to say that when we get down to the determination of significance that, um you know, we can't insist on. A small footprint. Um just reporting to you what. What they agreed, um what they could do, which was to lower the um the one side of the building and get rid of some of the. Offices in that area.
Yeah, basically, I reported about the guy who was in Virginia, first presentation. I I I mentioned it in writing in seventh floor. And I was told, once a building on the pocket.
My preference would have been to see five thousand square feet come off the footprint. Five thousand and five thousand, ten thousand, and then get rid of that second. So you would have got maybe fifteen thousand square feet. But the the initial purpose of it, which was a um an eating facility. Plus the kitchens, the kosher kitchen, which needed both.
Right.
Two kitchens, plus the bathrooms, plus a other area required, but they came up with. Uh number four, um review of the total lighting plan for the property versus the code. So on this one, Mike, please, you guys have agreed that um. There's a lot of current issues with the lighting that need to be resolved. Um in addition to the building itself and any lighting on the building has to be um dark skies compliant. The applicant has also agreed that any lighting on the property beyond the building. That is not compliant with the dark sky compliant rules would be fixed. Interpreted as any lights that are pointing out of the of the property towards any of the property. Around the site needs to be redirected inside and then it needs to be dimmed in accordance with the um dark skies compliant. So Mike, that that needs to be done, and that's gonna be one of the conditions of of the decision when we get there. And that'll be subject to inspection by the by the building's department. Okay. A dumpster location must be shown. We talked about this extensively. Um and you agreed to do that, that there would be a specific area for dumpsters. And this is one of the items that the um. Our Ulster County Planning Board having their recommendations, that there be a, an area that's enclosed. Um that they'll be, they'd be maintained in such a fashion that would be uh consistent with the new recycling rules that they're putting in place. So that was agreed to by the applicant. Um. The fifth, the number six on this page is that we asked them to take a look at some alternate designs. Um. With respects to the sheer mass of the building. So um the applicant did agree to the ten thousand square feet, agreed to smaller windows. And I don't know, are we gonna see tonight what the color?
Wait until call.
Okay.
Any minute.
So there was some movement uh in that regard. Um number seven, the planning board should carefully review this project in terms of the criteria for awarding a special use permit. Um. Again, a comment from the public is something that we will need to consider. This had to do with um. Just the overall approval of the special use, given some of the issues that have been raised in terms of the size. Um number eight, hydro geological study. We dealt with that back in March or April. Um. If they were increasing the usage, you know, the number of people on the site, they would have had to have done a hydro geological study. But since they warranted to us that there would be no more than five hundred and fifty campers. Uh on the site during the summer at any point in time, then that's consistent with the permits that they have from the county. Um and the D E C. And so, if you remember, our attorney wrote a letter. Saying that we don't have to require the hydro geological study. Given the fact that there was gonna be no increase in the water usage. The applicant also agreed that all the fixtures in the new building would be um. Hey, not not dark sky compliant. It would be uh inconsistent with um. Water usage uh criteria. So Mike, that was something that was agreed to by you guys.
So there would, wouldn't ever be any special events or anything, where you'd have an extra few hundred people coming by or visiting her, I mean.
Not that I've been told. Uh there would be no special events, no weddings, nothing of that nature. This would be to service the the facility. The camp, it wouldn't be uh, that would not be done there.
Okay.
Right, my second concern on that front. Um so this whole time, I don't know why, but I thought that the other camp down the road at three fifty. I thought that one was a boys' camp and one was a girls' camp. This weekend, I realized that they are both girls' camps. Uh we received a comment from the public with a video showing. Hundreds of girls on, I believe, Rogue Harbor Road, I think it was. Um. Um and in my mind, so so this facility obviously has appropriate square footage for the dining facility. There's also ten thousand square feet, I think, for recreation. And in my mind, um I also Googled, in both camps you register for them on the same website. So that leads me to believe that they're. Perhaps under the same management, I don't know. But you go to the same website and they're listed there for registration. So my concern is that this, if I ran those camps, I would want to use a brand new facility with great recreation for. The girls at the other camp, they're only one point four miles away. Um and so. Just this weekend, as I realized that there would, there there's no reason why they couldn't um utilize the site. I thought that they couldn't for other reasons. But anyway, that's something that was flagged for me. And so that's a new concern that I have, because I didn't have complete information. Um and in that, uh so I don't know. Those are my observations.
As to whether the camps are either in the H R or.
Well, if they're.
Sure, it's space.
It's a brand new facility. I don't know enough about the other camp to know what facilities they have. I mean, I'm running off of what I was able to find through Google. Any information from the public and what we think of it. So I I recognize also that that's incomplete information, but um it raises questions for me about water septic.
Yeah.
Um and then perhaps traffic issues. Um.
Pedestrian vehicle.
And and I would also add that as a, as from my perspective, I wouldn't necessarily object if that were. Part of the proposed project, but we need to consider that as part of it, right? So I I wouldn't object to that. I, they're investing a lot of money in this presumably. Um and it would make sense.
So I think Jennifer, Jennifer's comment is is excellent. How do we ensure that there aren't, there isn't an overuse of water and septic? In connection with your permits, such that you drain the aquifer. I mean, I'm exaggerating, but that. There isn't enough water or surrounding people are are affected. That's the purpose of the hydrogeologic study, to determine whether or not. How much water is there and how much could, what's the maximum usage? Um and also to find out if the pumping effects are, would affect on the properties. So the only thing I can think of is um those permits are given by the Department of Health and the D E C.
And they're based on?
It's based on average numbers, um which have been agreed to already under an existing permit. Um and so our concern would be water usage over and above the numbers in that permit. So I'm gonna turn to Greg, or Jennifer, you know. We went through this with another project, if you remember Ridgeview. How, how can we be assured? Or how does the county, cause ultimately it's the county's responsibility that they are living within the permit of a D E C. How um can the community be assured that they're living within um the permits? The water permits and the septic permits. Is it a weekly report that goes up? Is it checked by an engineer? Is it an engineer that's signing off on it? Uh so their license, um. Uh so their license, um it is quote unquote at risk, does the county check the logs, does it? How exactly does this happen for a project this large to ensure that we don't have a situation with this overusage?
Or to ensure that there's sufficient. That's it.
As a public water supply, they would be they would be required to provide um. Monthly reports. Of water usage and um. Those reports would show daily water usage, and they would have to provide those records to. The health department as part of their annual reporting, so they they would have to do that, they would also have to do the same thing for their sewer. Usage, they would have to do a discharge monitoring for for their sewer usage, but so those. Reports would go in to the health department. That would be based on their permitted use. So if they had visitors, as long as that didn't exceed their permitted use. It wouldn't um trigger anything from the health department to question. Overuse of water.
So who fills out the report?
They fill out the report.
License as a, a licensed engineer or licensed water specialist?
Licensed water operator.
Who's the licensed water operator?
Okay. Um the health department, since we bought that place, they sent two times their engineer. To look on our wells and our usage and our office needs to send it every month. The, how he said, the water usenicology, and they're coming, usually the last three years, they come three times. They come preseason, in the spring season, that's about the summer. And since we had, we are at P R, temporary residents in the winter, they're coming usually one time in the winter, usually March, April to make sure. So, yes, there is answer.
Could we get copies of those? Will we see what you've submitted?
Sure.
Okay.
Are you asking for copies every month?
No, I just would be interested in seeing what water use has been over the past probably, I mean, whatever you want to say, a couple of years, to get a sense of. What you've been saying.
So that would be good.
Okay, but we we answered the question, how to prevent overuse?
Yeah, well, those reports would indicate their usage in comparison to their permit.
And that report. They're not gonna be seen by town, gonna be seen by.
It's gonna be seen by the health department, and the health department should be mon, I mean, that's. That's their job to monitor and um. If if there's exceedances of their permitted usage, then the health department.
But because of the concern, maybe it will gonna be sewage discharge and not 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 consumption.
No, it's gonna, it should be on both. They should, they should have, they should be monitoring both.
Yeah.
So is is this camp, I mean, we asked sort of, asked around this, but is this camp connected to the other camp or is it same?
Um different LLC, different board, but the same community is sending the girls.
Yeah.
And that and and that camps, so I think it's important to say for the public. Um it's different grades. The most, the worst thing what can happen, if a girl is stepping out of the gate of the camp, we have security twenty four seven. That means that girls should, it will have to leave the camp at the second. So we are very, um um she mentioned, um it was a video. I don't remember that a group of girls should go out on the camp, yes, there are staff members and they have permission, because. They're they're staff members, so they can go out on charity town road, but there is no such a thing that girls. Are the only thing what can happen, that we have across the street, we have the um extra acre. So once a summer, the girls are going and playing their whatever. But there's also such a thing that travel from one camp to the other camp and I. Uh I I can't, I I can, I cannot see it happen, since it's different grades, it's over on math, I think it's failing and it's wrong. And it's a few other girls, I I don't see.
Well, what was the, what was the?
They they operate independently, fully.
What was the event that happened once, but what was the event where there was the video taken of the? On, what was it, Rogue Hollow Road? Was there an event or something or?
So is it closer to Telly Charity Town or to to the other camp? So maybe they they went for a walk from one gate to the other gate, I'm not sure, but not in Telly Charity Town, never happened.
Cause it was hundreds of people.
So maybe maybe it was like, they have a few gates. So maybe it was a walk, I'm not sure, I'm not involved, and I can find out if you want.
Well, you don't run the camp, so I wouldn't.
No.
You speak for them.
So.
But they're not people that are going back and forth. Okay.
I mean, staff members, we have, how many staff members, twenty, thirty, not more. So may maybe they have permission to do that, because whatever, they're same like me, I can also walk on the road.
Yeah.
But uh students, there's no such a thing.
I mean, it's 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 beyond the purview of the planning board, in my opinion, but we've listened to what the public has said, is that there there is. Traffic, people traffic, pedestrian traffic back and forth between the camps on the road, and that's a matter of. Public safety, so that's where my ears perk up a little bit, um and so, you know, when we have to acknowledge that, if we know what's going on. Uh we hear that it's going on, we have to pay attention to that, um and remediate that somewhat, so.
There was also, one of the letters from the public here, talking about helicopter flights. Can we elaborate a little?
Um since um it wasn't invited by us, so basically we gave. Um permission, so it was actually. Um what is the complaint, you can tell me, so I can answer. What is the complaint that you got?
Complaint was that a helicopter landed on a field without any permission.
Correct.
And then a golf cart took people to your camp, or some wasn't clear, so basically.
It was twi- two two occasions as far as. Correct, so it was one time that we had a helicopter, that just what all the camps had, they coming and make parachutes. And I don't remember that it should be a problem by then, I remember it was a problem that they they they. They put down a box on someone's property. Um as far I know, then the second time was that it was one. One guest, he whatever, he had, he he asked permission if he can land on our field. We gave permission, and by mistake, he landed on our neighbor's field across the street by Zach. And I talked to him, I apologized to him, and I did what I did uh need to do.
But does the town allow helicopters to land in any property?
I don't understand what you're asking me.
Does the town allow helicopters to land on any property?
Does the town allow?
Do you know that?
I I don't know, I mean, we do it with fire department when we have emergency.
Right.
Matter of fact.
That's a safety.
And we have designated landing zones, like.
When you go with this question, the answer will be.
So the, the the dates of the helicopter landings were on August eleventh and August twenty, no, August seventeen. And August twenty second, it was a Sunday and a Friday, and um. And. I was shocked when I read it, I mean, at first I said this can't be possible, why somebody would land a helicopter on somebody else's property? Um.
But at the end of the day, let's outside of our overview in consideration, yeah, so.
The town doesn't get involved in helicopter landings typically, we don't have a helicopter pad.
Yeah.
Um.
Look, it's some.
And I don't know, at some point, we will open the public hearing. Just public hearing is still open, if the person who wrote me the letter wants to comment, fine, I mean, the only comment I would say is if somebody got the call numbers on the. On the tail boom, they should be calling the state police and or the F A A, so.
Yeah.
The tail boom is the extension from the cab that goes to the rudder, and there's a pretty big number listed there. But um. You know, I think we don't regulate helicopters, I think you can understand.
That's a major mistake.
I think you can understand somebody. Somebody landing a helicopter on your property, it's like, you gotta be kidding me.
It's also a safety.
And you know, and it and it possibly in a in a different environment, somebody would take a pot shot at them. I mean, seriously, crazy things have happened, it's crazy to have a helicopter landing. On somebody else's property, that's equally as crazy to even prognosticate that somebody like take a pot shot, but anything's possible in this day and age, so. I mean, I guess the best I can do is say, I I'm sure you're gonna warrant that we're not gonna have helicopters landing on other people's property associated with the. With the project, and for that matter, I don't know, in order to land a hot helicopter. With any kind of regularity, uh and to land legally, you have to get F A A approval to do that.
So the, when it happened, it wasn't me, it was, I gave permission.
You can't give permission.
Can't give permission, that's not, that's not correct. Yeah, for next time.
You you can't give permission, I mean, the little bit that I know of.
Probably the pilot should know that, should.
Well, the pilot should know, of course, they could lose their license. Yeah, we don't regulate helicopters, but the pilot should know it, they need to, they need to file this, even with a helicopter flight plan, they can lose their license.
I I I hope so.
So are we okay? No helicopters? And I'm sure he had, whoever it was needed to get there quickly for something, and would have taken too long to get there by car. But, okay, can I continue?
Yeah.
Um. There's a need, I'm still on page five, there's a need for the SWIP, we've got that. Um where is the septic and what is the effect on the nearest neighbors? Uh then, any comments on the septic? I don't know who.
Oster County D O E, Oster County Planning Board comments about septic, I believe, and water, but I think that's at the end, so I.
Perfect. Um. Page five, again, overwhelming scale of the building, we've dealt with that, the applicant has made a proposal on how to um make the building smaller. What's the lighting arrangement, its impact on the neighborhood? The applicant has agreed to uh change any lighting that's shining outside of the project or outside of the property. Onto any of the neighbors, uh there's a need to to study the visual impact and the view shed, Joe, this is the one I asked you. I still, the pictures I have are still not clear, they're blurry, they're also taken with the wrong lens. Uh they have to be taken with a fifty millimeter lens, because that's what most parallels the human eye, and the ones that you sent us were done with a telephoto lens. I don't know why they would do that, but you need to get me some good pictures, we talked about that today. And you said you had them, so I just need to see, the board needs to see them. Yeah.
Yes.
Current and future impact of traffic associated with the facility, with the current impact. So let's talk about that, the current impact, as I understand it, is the beginning of the season. If the girls take um take a trip somewhere and then at the end of the season with the buses. And Mike, or Moshe, if you want to comment on how you handle the buses uh coming into the property?
Yes, um so basically, um we we have shifts, meaning. How you say, they're coming, they're arriving, and they are going home after a few weeks, then we shift back. So it's not always like, sometimes you can see buses also in the summer. Because some girls, what they wasn't, you know, the first half, they're going home, they're coming back. They go home for a weekend, there's some, it's not like we have one buses and and go home after summer. Also, we have sometimes trips, the girls are going to um parks, amusement parks, whatever. Um in the first half of this year's summer, it was better than last year. Uh we worked before with the building inspector, Mike. Um we made that a a a huge difference this year, we have, you can see on the site plan, a long road, but it's going. We could have, we can handle how much buses you want, so we we handled that. Uh all the buses should go from the first gate, go all around the camp and go out from the last gate. It was two complaints, um so what, um he indicated, I I think it was. Very well, it was also the second half of summer, the last four weeks, he suggested that instead of we should send out all buses at one shot. We should make pause, pause like uh four buses, nine pause for two minutes, four buses, four buses, I think it was very good.
Alright, so, ten, many comments, right?
Yeah.
The, go ahead.
Uh I look school buses, uh uh average like a fifty students in a school bus. Teenager, teenager.
Forty seven, forty six.
Yeah, fifty, so my question is, what is the capacity, capacity of your parking lot, so it's like a five hundred? People, like a ten, ten buses, twelve buses? Can you put them on yours, so they're not in the street, not like in the park?
I just mentioned that that uh we, I think we have hundred and fifty parking spaces, but the buses are not using the parking spaces. The buses are going in the whole around the camp, they have a road, private road.
There's a ring road around the perimeter.
I understand, but where are you gonna put, let's say, ten, twelve buses at once?
You don't see your buses, so they're coming, dropping, or leaving.
What if first, they're going for field trips, all buses come at the same time, like in my neighborhood, it was a camp. And the moving actually kids from your camp to my neighborhood, all the buses came, parked in the road, in black, all completely. Uh so I'm, you should park all those buses on your property, not.
They do, on the ring room, the buses are staged on the ring road around the perimeter of the property. The buses, unless something correct, do not stop on charity family. Alright, so what I'm gonna do with the buses, because traffic keeps coming up. Comes, been coming up for years, I guess. Or it seems like it is because of the complaints that I know go into the building department, and this board has mentioned a lot, so I know, Moshe, at one one time. Um you had hired, or you had on staff, people who actually directed the traffic. Alright, you also utilized the constables, Rich, I can't think of Rich's last name, but you utilized them. Um so are you doing that? Do you intend to continue to do that?
Of course.
Alright, so look, the part of the um. Decision when it comes, is that you're going to need to have um. Bus monitors, somebody to actually be there when the buses are arriving each season, whatever fashion they are arriving. It'll be in the decision.
Absolutely.
And one of the things I should also tell you, and inform the board that I'm going to do. Um since it's okay for us, it's obviously very clear, the board is very concerned with these things, I know that you want. And promi- you know, promises are made, or solutions are come up with, and hopefully, you know, as mistakes are made, they're fixed. So what I'm gonna do in um with our special use, in our code, we're allowed to have. Projects that we approve with a special use, come back. Um within a period of time, it can be a year, it can be two years, we can do it a year, do it every year. And we ask for another public hearing, so you, if if you get the approval. Approval, in my mind, what we're going, what I'm gonna do, what we're gonna do is, it'll be for a year. You come back at the end of that year, and there'll be a public hearing and and a hearing in front of this board. At which time, if there are complaints or whatever, they would all be here, and we'll talk about, well, you agreed to this. But we still have problems, we have the ability to lift the special use permit at that time, in other words, you lose the permit. And I'm sure you don't want to. I, we did it, we've done it with one other project, and it didn't work out, because it will work the first year. And the project promised to do everything, but then, at that time, the board would not do it another year. Um but my intention is if we have problems the first time around, then we're gonna do, we're gonna keep doing it. We we have to, it's not pissing on anybody, in fact, just for the board's knowledge, we're doing with just about every special use. Where we've, we have a large special use to ensure we have the ability to weigh comments, weigh complaints. And then ask the applicant to fix it, and if they don't fix it, we have the ability then to suspend the special use. So that's the only way that I can see getting at some of these things that seem to be recurring, um I don't know if that makes the board um. Oh, it is what it is, um I am aware of a blocked perimeter, you called it the, what you call it, the green room? The green way.
Green room, several.
It goes all the way around, it stacks, if I remember asking the constable, it stacks, it stacks about fifteen buses. Um. And I don't know whether you still are using the constables or you're using somebody to monitor all this, but you're going to have to do that going forward. So I hope that satisfies some of the clients we had, as far as parking the buses, they. Can't be parked on the street, that's obvious, they have to be parked somewhere on the property. Can't be parked on the street, that's obvious, they have to be parked somewhere on the property, there's parking for individual cars of a hundred and twenty-six. Uh spots, there's a spot for to put another thirty, and another spot to put another fifty, so it gets up to about two hundred of the buy-in cars, something of that sort. But um but that's not where the buses going, the buses go on that green, green road.
One more thing about the parking. Okay?
Go ahead.
Um we had a hard time till now, all the deliveries for the kitchen. Because there was a very um big hill, and they're supposed to wait. With, hopefully with this building, this promise going to be sold, and it will not be a thing that uh trucks staying or trading on waiting. Shows a lot, we'll have multiple spaces.
There's more room for the trucks. Okay, um. We talked about the uh use of exterior materials and colors that came up, do you wanna show the board the colors, Moshi?
Yes. So this, we chose um together, we had a, a few months ago, we had to sit with the board, few of the board. And we had a lot of options, um we decided, the board decided to use this too, because. Um it's matching to our facility, and it's also very calm. Uh charcoal color is very calm, this is a regular black charcoal gray stone, and. I, that's the actual colors, but we want the use.
So the color, the beige color is the color of the existing buildings, right? This one, and then what are you gonna use the other one for? What, is that the dot color here?
Our color is this, so basically, our, our link, our existing, existing color is this, fully black. And this color, bottom, and whatever, it's two-tone everything, so this building is also what we, since the black is. Um top, whatever, we used the charcoal gray, was a little bit more calm.
They've chosen something a little more muted, that's why they went with the charcoal gray.
Okay, can you pass, we pass these around?
Uh that looks different. Does anybody else wanna look that up?
Okay, while you're passing that around, should we keep going?
Yep.
Okay, I'm at the bottom of page six, number two, that was taken care of. Number three.
Sorry, did you keep the noise, um we talked about noise, but.
Oh, yeah.
No, we didn't talk about that. The noise complaint came from one um. Well, it was a series of complaints, and I think you took care of it, it was. Kids being kids, they were up late at night, and they had the windows open, and they, and whatever kind of music playing, so you took care of that.
In this new facility, do any of these windows that face the road, do any of them open? They do open, we need to keep them closed for the summer, if you guys are. Because I'm thinking about those people that live across the street, so I'm thinking about.
So when you have a problem, it's not that they're not venting, that's not what's being asked, I believe.
I have only one neighbor, once across, they can hear noise.
Yeah.
But I know, so I spoke with them, they remember just in case it happens, and also, it was the first year. Takes time till they know, after ten o'clock, must be quiet, if not, there's consequences. And also, given that this is uh. Probably five, six hundred or more from the first layer, this building, so.
But would it be possible to try to avoid opening the ones facing the road, and instead preferentially opening windows in the back?
So there's only one window opening, um just the first one, in case of emergency, maybe Peter, I don't know, are you comfortable?
I, I have seen side of the building, as you said, you know. And hide off the ground, you know, it's hard for me to say.
So you're asking that the, the windows not be opened?
I don't think she's asking they can't be open.
No.
But that they just not be open is a matter.
Like if they need to be.
Oh, no, no, it's not, it's not, it can be, those, but uppermost, still uppermost.
Presumably, you'll have air conditioning, so it should be included for like cooling or anything, but then. That would be nice for the neighbors, I think.
And, and without seeing one, I can see maybe some guys, so, so this window essentially from dining. All those windows, right? And second floor, it was some offices, right, oh, it's high ceiling.
The second floor is have a. Upper level of the, yeah.
So. So whatever has a one floor, except the kitchen, don't make it. And then elevated ceiling, dining.
Because I, also, if I may, I think that it'll get pretty loud in there with the atrium, and so. Just leaving the windows closed as a courtesy.
Okay, so we're gonna keep the windows closed, not they will never be able to be opened. Alright, we're on the next page, page seven, um comment number four. Um alright, this comment number four gets to the permits. And um. So Joel, or Mike, um Isaac Gens, and White had sent me permits. And I thought I had mentioned this before a while ago, but they seem to be out of date or lapsed. So can we get the most recent permits from the DOH, on the health? The BEC, whatever permits are required for septic for the water, and make sure that they have up-to-date dates on them. And I think the issue with them.
I think it was the camp permit, right?
Yes.
Because they think to the inspection, yeah.
Well, the camp permit that would show the amount of water taking that's allowed, as well as the amount of septic that's allowed.
Uh the DEC has a speedies permit, the speedies permit doesn't renew every year. The only permit that would renew every year is the camp, because it has to be inspected to be a thing. They wish.
Right, help me out here.
I thought we had the most recent permits, I thought I looked.
Did you look at them, were they?
They didn't have a lot of information, because it was a renewal. Which didn't, my recollection is that it didn't quantify water use, that's why I'm interested to see what the meters show, because my. Do you recall that as well?
It was just, they were just, basically, the, the health department permit just basically acknowledges that they're permitted.
And it renewed, and it gave a permit number, but it didn't show.
Doesn't give.
I don't, and maybe it said, maybe it had the per capita, I can't remember, but it didn't give an.
But that's, but that'll be, that'll, we'll get that with the um reports.
Yes, so the.
Okay, so the reports will tell us what they're using, and it'll also tell them what they're allowed to use.
Correct, the report. I don't remember exactly how the report is, but generally, the report lists the permit limits, and then it lists the information of what's actually being used.
And that's both for water and septic?
For septic, I'm not sure.
Pretty the same as the water, right, it's them, if you're pumping so much out of the ground, so much is going back in.
Okay, right.
There's no source for the water other than the well.
So if we get the water reports, we'll know what the, okay.
Yes.
That's sufficient. Uh please update and resubmit the project narrative, you did that, we, we're now onto a third narrative. Um so that's been done, six, please also update, resubmit the site maps. We talked about that, Mike, eventually, we're gonna need all new sets of maps when we, alright? Number seven, please review the application materials submitted to be sure, all I can see numbers are consistent and accurate, we did do that um previously. Uh, number one, on this post-meeting letter from five twenty-eight, we agree that you would work with Peter Nelson and the fire department on a safety plan. Is that, Peter, are you?
Yeah, what they have existing right now, it's been very good, uh no, I think we asked Mike to, because I think your request was. Submitted that they're on some fire accidentally, or about construction. So I believe I asked for me to um to submit a request that that letter be directed to the. Um after fire chief at Davis, so for the, for the new proposal, we haven't really talked about it. But what they have now is evacuation place, because we just need to amend it if necessary.
Okay.
Oh, we have established a safety and evacuation plan now.
Okay. And we have it on file.
I believe so, yeah.
Number two, we asked for a disciplined operating, okay, we talked about that already, next page, um page eight, number three. Uh we talked about this, the use of water-saving devices on, in a new building. Um and Mike, we need, well, that'll have to be, it'll be inspected, but um. So number three is taken care of, number four applicant will continue to try to create a visual. We did get that, it's this plan right here. Uh going down to the next post-meeting letter, lighting, we talked about that, some of these are duplicates. Two, concerned with preventing traffic between the properties, I think we talked about that, Zorian?
I wanna comment, then, was. Would like to have them to remember, but that stairs coming down, if you're looking to some comments that. Going to be removed, so make sure it's not shown in the plan anymore.
And the county comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the county wants, and they've agreed to take those steps out.
Right.
Okay.
It needs to be reflected on the block.
Consider site distances for the new commercial entrance. Uh we talked about that, that was in one of the county comments, that they had, that has to be done properly, Mike, do you remember that?
Yeah, no, no, we're not creating a new entrance, we're reusing an entrance, the entrance is existing, there is no new created entrance.
I think the comment from the county was they wanted to make sure that the site distance was, was appropriate. That was in one of the county comments. Um we talked about number four, the dumpsters, number five, we've talked about this, the scale and the size of the building. So the applicant, as we, we talked and agreed to scale it down by ten thousand square feet. Um future impacts of this and other camps on road traffic, um well, the only road traffic we have are the buses. And future, um there's no plans for more camps, at least from this applicant, he's not proposing a new camp. Seven, the cemetery, the other project, so that was identified, the applicant has agreed to put a hundred-foot buffer around the cemetery. Alright, and while we're at it, Ship, Shipoh, um we did get the Shipoh report, and Shipoh had nothing to say about. Um any archaeological, um possibility of archaeological remains anywhere um contiguous to the property, so. Um that's gonna have to be a, a non-issue then, and were not applicable. Number eight, future impacts of this and other camps on road traffic, we talked about that, cemetery, talked about it, ten, archaeological remains, we talked about it. Eleven, does new zoning determination affect the need or not for hydro study? No. So it went from a three acre to five acre, it doesn't change anything, the issue goes back to how much water is being used, and is there any change in order? Where the air conditioning units going, they're all going on the ground in the courtyard behind the building, so they won't be projecting any sound.
And.
Uh up and out, sorry?
Okay, but they show on the plan, well.
You wanna show on the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Mike, you heard that, right?
Yeah, no, we have to show, it's gonna be part of the limited disturbing, so that's.
And we'll see it on the, on the new plan set that we eventually got.
Yes.
Okay, noise complaints regarding late-night music, we talked about that. Heightened noise generated by air conditioners, we talked about that, no amplified music or announcements, that's gonna be part of the decision. Do a full SWIP, we've got it. We're almost there, page ten, um we did do uh selling out the DEC visual impact assessment form. Um I think we were satisfied that uh the impact is none to the nervous. Although, um Joel, I wanna see those pictures. Like the ones you said, uh you had got. I can't understand you, I'm sorry.
We'll get you the picture, no problem.
Thank you. Um. The old dining area, what did you tell us you were gonna use the old dining area for? That was a question.
It, it's on here.
Common area workshop, thank you. I'm gonna be able to see it when I get my glasses on, thank you, um. We need to refer to Shipoh, that was done, Shipoh had no comments, historical society, we took care of that. Okay, a lot of these are duplicate, duplicates, so I think we're done with those, on the next page, page eleven. Um. These are the county comments. So the first one is um having to do with the. Well, the summary is just a statement. Um. The recommendations we, uh regarding access. Talks about the staircase being eliminated, Mike, you agreed that the staircase would be eliminated. So I believe that takes care of that one, water and septic capacity, we talked about that by getting the water reports.
Can we go back one?
Go ahead.
Access, uh it said that they wanted the curb cut reduced. For the entrance? And I don't love that comment. Because they're getting buses in there, we, we pulled up back to back, I, I don't like the idea of reducing that curb cut, because I think, given that it's primarily buses.
We did talk about that, um. That they, I think, Mike, you had the same comment, that the curb cut has to accommodate.
There's certain radiuses for, not only buses, but uh emergency equipment, that you wanna, you don't wanna squeeze them, you want to be able to get them in to your facility. And like I said previously, it is an existing entrance.
So I think the comments we got, no, I think, I know that the comments we got from the applicant, is they're gonna put the curb cut in there, appropriate to emergency vehicles, trucks. Uh and that the county's comment is, they're asking for it to be smaller, I don't think that they knew entirely what uh that was gonna be used for.
So, because it says here that it will be reduced, but we're gonna leave it the way it is.
Well, you know, let more evaluated for the plans, alright, but we wanna make sure that we can get emergency service vehicles in there, without, without. More importantly than buses.
And I.
Yeah.
I thought they were just talking about the one on the west side.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it just the one?
Yeah.
Not the others.
Yeah, it's not reducing your number.
It's the gravel lot.
Well, that's why I say it's an existing exit, it's gated, we walk, we're.
Yes, yes.
I didn't see a lot of work, but we'll evaluate.
But I think y'all are showing it to be widened, and so it.
It was wanting to meet the radius requirements for emergency equipment more than it was for buses. But we'll take a look with them.
I'm sure the county was a bit well-meaning in what they'd comment, but they're gonna do what's necessary for the trucks and the buses and everything else, okay? Water and septic, we talked about that, the dumpsters, we talked about that. Um page twelve, stop me if I'm going, if I'm skipping over things and I shouldn't be, stormwater, we talked about that. Uh and that's covered in the SWIP. Covered by the SWIP, so we're fine with that. Photo simulation and context, um they asked for extensive photo simulation. Over and above what we have gotten in the past, and the applicant would prefer not to do that, and uh if the board is in agreement.
So what does, what, what did, what do you think?
Do you remem- do you remember, I'm gonna compare this to what they were asking for, for Atcourt Social, if you remember, Atcourt Social had given us um. Profiles of all the buildings, and the county wanted more, and we agreed, no, they gave us enough. So my question for you, is this enough to get an idea of what it's gonna look like from? As well as what we get, Zorian, in the uh architecturals. I frankly don't know what the county's talking about, and what we would do, what the applicant would do more than this. So you're satisfied? They want angles from.
They want it from other sides of it.
And the other sides aren't gonna be seen by anybody from Old Cherry Town Road, so.
It's just a statement you have to deal with.
Right. Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yes, that's what my question, what does county?
Are they looking for um? An idea of what the building is gonna look like from, out of, you, you know, viewpoints further away?
As in?
Well, the ridge, I don't, I think, you know, in the wide, wide.
We got those from the visuals that were done by the applicant.
Clear.
Okay.
It's, it's written and said to what, to measure if it'll fit into the context of the existing neighborhood. Um. So the backside of the proposed building would be. So the backside of the proposed building would be, the neighborhood would be. The existing new range buildings.
Right.
I, does it fit in in all buildings?
Is it necessary?
And if it doesn't, do you?
I don't think it's necessary. I think the only one we're concerned with, if, does the board agree, is what it looks like from Old Cherry Town Road. And we got the visuals. But you need to reassure us, you said there were some new ones and.
And all those three. Remain. They used to remain, whatever was shown here.
Well, those are the current trees.
Right.
So they're gonna remain.
All, all trees, what is out for the fence, most of them.
In addition to that, Mike, in your landscape plan, you're gonna put more trees there.
Yeah, we will look into more screening tree.
Quick growing conifers.
Green giants, something along that nature that'll fill and cover us.
Okay. All right. Uh, and sustainability, and the applicant agreed to do this. This is the county adds this to every project. Along, uh, well, every project that they look at. So, uh, E V stations, um. Uh. The whole nine yards, and the applicant has agreed to do, what was it, four to six?
Yeah.
E V stations? Is that what it was, Mike?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So when it comes time for us to, when we do the decision, um, there'll be one comment that we'll say we disagree with and the rest of them. Uh, I think there's only one, we agree with and. So that's that.
Well, you would have a western entrance. Curb, uh, maybe.
That one and then.
And whether you want, whether you want photo simulations from other angles.
And I think we're saying that what we done is good. And they're gonna do whatever's necessary for the size of the trucks and the emergency vehicles in terms of the curb cuts.
It's very clear, everyone knows if we're disagreeing with the county, even if you think it's not smart or whatever else, we need five votes.
Right.
Right, so.
As opposed. We need a, a super majority of five votes instead of just four votes. Okay, um. So. Public, public hearing is still open, so I'm gonna ask members of the public if they want to make any comments. Does anybody here wants to comment? Yes.
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Um, this is the.
Can we have you, can we have your name?
Sure, I'm Andrea Corrigan. Um, this is the first time I'm seeing this, um. Picture of what the building is going to look like. And I'm having a hard time imagining. This building in our very beautiful rural community. It, it looks like a hospital to me. I'm not really sure that, that. That this architectural style is something that our community. Would be happy about looking at. Every day when they go up the road. So I'm kind of surprised that. The board isn't commenting more about the style of this building considering. You know. How. Everyone likes the rustic. And. I don't even know what else to say. Anyone wants to? And that I, I'm just a little bit labradasted, if, if you want to know.
Okay, thanks for that comment. Anybody else?
Yeah, in my letter, um, I wrote about the R five designation. And I was curious if. Oh, my name, Chelsea McGowan, um, and I was curious if there was, it seemed like there was a little bit of confusion if this was. Um, R three or R five, I don't know that I like saying them correctly, but. It seems that since it's in R five, there needs to be seventy-five foot setbacks. From the road, from the property lines, and so. I don't know if that's been taken.
So I'll answer that question when, um. Chelsea, you've been here a couple of times and I frequently will say that we're not gonna answer questions, we're listening to comments, but I'll, it's. It's from the center point of the road. So that's, so it does meet the, the seventy-five feet from the center point of the road. Yeah, we had the same question. A while ago, and we got confirmation of that from the building department. Anybody else from the public? Have a comment to make? Mister Corrigan?
Um. I think as opposed, when you're talking about what this, this monstrosity is gonna look like. You can also see it. You will also be able to see it from Samsonville Road. And heading from near the intersection of Boismill as you're heading towards the hotel. Um, especially once you have the leaves drop on. You see the existing hotel. This is going to be higher than that, so it's still gonna be visible. It's gonna be more so. Um, another question, well, you don't have to answer. I thought this was a hotel, not a girls' camp. And now that everyone's referring it to as a camp. Now, I know up the street at Villa Veritas, they weren't allowed to have, and I know it has to do with zoning. They weren't allowed to have a boys' camp there. So because it was previously used as a rehab center, they ran it as a rehab center, apparently. This summer. But apparently it was only a rehab that lasted for two months. Cause once summer ended, the place closed up. Sounds like a boys' camp to me. Okay? And now we hear about the traffic study. Well, the only thing you have to worry about is buses. It's what I, I heard here tonight. What about all those minivans that looks like a minivan convention when you go past this hotel? Or girls' camp, whatever it is. We walk this Cherry Town Road. We walk our dogs pretty much every night. These minivans are flying up and down the road all the time. Where they're going, I'm not positive. I would guess up to the Veritas Villa. Rehab center. And now I hear about this, well, I was informed by my neighbors about this helicopter nonsense. They, the first day, the seventeenth of August. They come in, hover over the Whitman orchard, knocking apples off the trees, thereby ruining part of their crop. They land on their property, which is across the street from my field, which abuts. The hotel property. They put boxes in their helicopter full of. Trinkets, I was told by Moshe, who is the manager, or I was told was managing the place. That. Those boxes contain slippers. So then they take off from their property, cross over to the back lot of their hotel. Where there is a horde of girls in an open area. And they're dumping these. Slippers out over top of this crowd of people. Hovering or tra- traipsing along or flying along at probably less than a hundred feet. I have video of all this, if you wish to see it. That was supplied to me by the neighbors who witnessed it. So they're below treetop level in this video, dropping these slippers. And then they're flying over across my field, and now these empty boxes. Come flying out of the helicopter, landing into my field. So when this was brought to my attention, I went down, I collected the boxes. I didn't bring them tonight. I was gonna bring them here and present them to you as a gift. From my lovely neighbors. I spoke with Moshe that night, told him I was not happy with the whole thing. Um, I told him about the situation at the orchard. And what do they do about it? Five days later, on the twenty-second of August. They land a bigger helicopter in Zach Whitman's field. To the, as you're looking at his house, to the left of his house. This field is bordered on two sides by tall trees. On the other side, by a garage and his residence. And it sets on the opposite side, of course, it's Cherry Town Road, which sets probably eight to ten feet above. The level that the helicopter had landed in that field. And as also next to Cherry Town Road are where the high, the, uh, power lines run through. Is this a safe banner? They unloaded their guests or, uh. Big monkey mops, whatever you wanna call them, while. We call it hot loading or unloading. People coming out of the helicopter while it's full rotor spinning overhead. One person in the video of this as well can be seen starting to walk towards the rear rotor of the helicopter. So when they leave Zach's field. Which of course Zach did not give him permission to land there. He's got young kids that could have been outside, and if they struck a tree. A power line, a building, these rotors spinning will end up where? Who knows? But after they left his field. They go over and park the helicopter in my field. When they know I wasn't happy when they dropped boxes in the field, I wasn't any happier when they dropped the helicopter in the field. And then they go out there with a golf cart. To transport whoever was left in that helicopter back and forth, going across my field. These are the type of neighbors that we have to deal with in that part of the town of Rochester all summer long. Yet. We'll give them what they want, is the basically the impression I get from the board. How can we make this work? Reduce the size of the footprint of this building. Okay, well, we'll cut off half the second floor. Footprint's still the same. And there was something else I was gonna mention, but. I'm sitting here so friggin pissed. That. I'll let you know, I've lived here my entire life. That's it, that's about all I can say.
Well, that's pretty, um. It is pretty succinct in his summary of. Kind of an egregious invasion of somebody's privacy and their property.
Yeah, and they think it's fine. You know what their, their options were when, at the first night, when they dropped garbage in my field and knocked apples off Zach's orchard? Oh, I'll compensate you. I'll compensate you. Just give me some money and people will go away, they'll shut their mouth. And then they know I didn't want them on the property, they didn't, I didn't want their garbage on the property, and then they just. Disregard what your neighbors or other property owners want. And then go land in other people's property. Without asking permission. I guess the old saying, I guess it's easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission. But I don't forgive very often, and I will never give permission, actually. That's it.
Thanks, Mister Corrigan. Moshe, I think you have, um. Some pretty pissed off individuals here tonight.
Neighbors.
And so, um. Within your control. And when I heard about this this afternoon, when I got Mister Corrigan's email. Um, I was feeling pretty good about. Of the ability for this board to move forward. And there was a period of time when I just said, this is such Milwaukee. Uh, it's unbelievable that you would, that this would be done. Not you, not you, not you. But that somebody would have the audacity to invade somebody's privacy and property like that. I wouldn't fly an helicopter on your bathroom. And it shouldn't be done to anybody else in this room. And having said that, my. Role as the chairman of the planning board is, is not to tell you what you should or shouldn't do. There's codes that tell you what you should or shouldn't do and. I gotta believe that whoever did this is in violation of federal law. F A A law. And just plain common sense. And that's when I thought about what we had done with another project, a large project where we told them. That they're gonna be back here every year to renew their special use. So, to the extent that our attorney tells us that we can do that to make code, but I wanna make sure. Then that's what we're gonna do every year. Unfortunately, I don't wanna have to see same applicant every year to worry about whether or not they're in compliance with what they said they would do, but I guess that's what we have to do. So I guess that's my. Um, simple way of saying, uh, I think quite a few people are legitimately ticked off. And, uh, it, uh, it's, it saddens me that as a board, we have to listen to this. Much less what. The individuals, the court rights and whoever else, what they have to go through, um. And I'm very serious, it's, um. Mister Corrigan, not directing this to you that you would do this, but some knucklehead. May decide that the way to deal with it is. Kind of off the rails. Now, and nobody wants that, cause we're supposed to be neighbors. So, um. I'll keep quiet at this point. Um, I had anticipated suggest, anybody else? I mean.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, your name? What's your name?
Michael Rudin. Samsonville. Um, just, I've seen the, the lights now have gotten better, but there was a long period of time. When to, to talk about dark sky compliance, the, the camp was like a stadium and causing tremendous light, uh, pollution. And there's lots of, I'm like, you hear complaint amongst me and not compliance. So I guess my question to the, and I know you're, that's why I'm not gonna get answered by Steph or. But maybe it's a rhetorical question that I placed upon the board is, if there is a history of non-compliance. How does that affect the decision to allow? You know, marching these facilities and even the helicopter incident, all these sort of things. Is this, that not part of the board's? Consideration when they decide to allow special use of the work to build something as large as this.
No, I think it's the case that, you know, each person has to answer that for themselves. Non-compliance in the past is certainly indicative of whether or not they comply in the future. And that's. You know, you, your kid does the same thing over and over again, it's. Uh, sooner or later, you, you figure you have a, you have a problem of some sort. Having said that, um. We've been, we've been assured. You heard tonight that they made certain, um. Statements that things would get fixed. And in terms of the board. We have the ability to put into the, um, into the decision to say that this is what you must do. And then it's up to the building department in order to make, to make sure that those things get done. And then I also mentioned that as a special use, I'm gonna have this project come back. A year from the, I guess it's the time of the C of O being issued. Come back, and if there are issues such as this. You know, we can deal with it by suspending the special use permit, which essentially puts. Puts that dining facility out of business. But as far as how the board responds to or, um, makes their decision of whether to approve the project or not. Each person is gonna have to determine that for themselves.
Um, yeah, there are certain guidelines we should talk about. First of all, in general. The enforcement decisions for the town, there's, if there's an alleged, um, violation. Is really in the hand of the code enforcement officer. This board does not do enforcement per se. We do planning and licensing of, of, of land use, et cetera. Now, I think that best your question is if we know that there's. A violation in the past, does that affect what we do going forward? And the answer generally is no. Um, we, as, as the chair said, we will make a. Site plan approval based on the environmental issues that come up, the zoning issues that come up based on the representations of the applicant. If the, to the extent that there's a concern about compliance, and I've said this, because applicants will, will say things, oh, don't worry about that, we'll do this, we'll do that, I think, that's fine. Everything you say will end up as a condition. And so what we can do is, going forward, we can write the conditions which functionally. Which function as the law of the project. This is the code, the zoning code as we have applied to the project. This is what can get, can get enforced by the code enforcement officer. Then going forward, it's the code enforcement officer's job to enforce it. Now, we will try to take care and not set up a situation where we know that there's not going to be compliance. I mean. In some cases, and we, and we generally don't do that, but the applicants do have a right to apply to us for a particular. Um, site plan and as, and as long as it's reasonable to move forward. Uh, they can do that. I wanna make one other point here, which is that there are some cases where the violation in the past, the alleged violation. Or in fact, it could be violated, it could be something that they've, you know, been adjudicated to have been a violation, is very closely related to, um. Moving forward. The best example of that is when the applicants have started to build the project, like building a road clearing trees. On the very project that there before us, which is not allowed to do. We have asked, well, in order to tie that, you know, it's basically serve as a pocket enforcer in terms of the. Not you're going to jail, not even be fined, but we're gonna, that's gonna have an impact on the site plan review. We, we need legislation to do that, and we've asked the town board to consider granting us certain authority to. Basically deny applications, um, if there are violations that we feel directly relate to the application. That has not been provided yet. I'm not sure if the violations you're talking about, or the violations the other gentleman we're talking about would fit into this, it sounds like it's a little bit out there. A helicopter or something else.
General, my concern for a small town like this is the ability to enforce. You know, it, it seems limited. And it seems like this, this is among where with history, it, you know, that it should be.
We can enforce.
A relevant thing for the board to.
We can enforce retroactively, moving forward, which is, what a town is, any, any, um. Prosecutor, enforcer needs is two things, you need a, a black letter law that you can enforce that they're violation of. And you need the, the willingness and the evidence, et cetera, to move forward. We can provide the black letter law based on the conditions that we set for this. Including no helicopters, for example, that's what comes down, it's kinda silly, but that's maybe what we need.
Apparently not.
And then the CEO. At some point in the future, Cannon will decide whether. He wants to enforce based on the facts that occur at the time. We, at this point, cannot send them packing because of, because of these things.
How, however, what Greg is proposing is a mechanism to review. Uh, I think is a good one, one of we, you know, we still need to discuss. You know, it's not only about kinda holding the applicant's feet to the fire in terms of, you know. This is serious, we wanna see how you comply. Also gives an opportunity for the public to come back after a year and give feedback on what may not be working and find a solution. And I think it's a.
That's an important, very important point, because what we're talking about here is not just a site plan approval, special use permit. And that does give us the authority to review it and, and basically have the permit expire and then come back to us for, for renewal. And, and we can hear from the public and, and.
Hear about that. My other question is, the, in terms of the, um. The, what's the, I'm sorry, the historical review, in terms of the aesthetics of the building and the ability of the planning board, because it's. It's all harsh consensus that it's incredibly uncontextual, non-defectual, uh, project, and yet. You know, to, to talk about stucco colors or charcoal versus black really. Doesn't really address the issue at all. So I'm curious about what sort of. Uh, what that input from these various places can actually mean in the, in this.
Well, I wish that, yeah, I wish the town, you know, mansions. I'll answer you, um, I wish the town had better architectural standards. Uh, is better all I can say now, you know, we can, we can use just our common sense, if you would. And everybody's degree of common sense and what's appropriate, and many, some of the buildings, a lot of the buildings on this property. Have always been in a state of somewhat, does it really fit? Is it too big? Is it well-kept? But I wish there were better standards in terms of bulk size of buildings. Um, I wish there were better standards in terms, there is a height standard which they need. Um, if there was a better bulk's size standard. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here with that size. So you have a comment?
Thank you.
You have a comment, sir?
My name is Dennis Levalle, I'd like to build on that. And build on this comment about the harmony with the neighborhood. So, you were talking about standards from the town. Um, and the harmony with the neighborhood. Just for a, for perspective. Your average size of a tractor supply store. Is fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square foot, feet. This project is double the size on an average tractor supply store. This project on two and nine will already be a big project. Corner of Simpsonville and Cherry Town. Can you imagine a tractor supply store there? Twice the size of the average store? You don't need standards to understand that this does not fit. With the existing neighborhood. It's a long list of concerns about this project, but just this one. The sheer size of this project is something else in harmony with the neighborhood. You heard it three times today.
Does the board have anything else?
Yeah, I have, uh, at least I just wanted to bring it up again, on the plan, final plan. They show the trees that were twelve inch and down and on. Because we need to consider it for me to cause them or not cause them. And, uh, it would be beneficial for us to go and revisit property one more time.
Say it again.
To go on the site one more time.
You wanna go inside one more time? It's fine with me. Mike, Moshe? So who wants to arrange that? Mike, you wanna be the one to arrange that? Would you talk to Stacy?
Yeah, no problem.
And then send, Stacy sends something out to whoever wants to make another visit. Anybody else from the board? Okay.
I just, I wanna, well, two things I wanna dread. My, one is, I mean, I think this, I, I hear the comments about the na, the. Large mass of this building and it's, I think it's one of the things that we've struggled in a lot. Um, I don't wanna dictate architectural style on anybody, but we don't, as you, you know, to your point, we. We have guidelines within which we try and regulate things and, and they're not that strong. Uh, I think that, um, you know, when you look at the plan. One of the things here is to point about, you know, the existing buildings, they're also large, they're also sprawling, and when you look at the plan. The, uh, footprint of the new building is considerably smaller than what's already there.
In total?
And, yeah, and you know, the difference is that the dining and, you know, some of the other places, that places that have broken up. This is more a question of massing, I think, than actual footprint. Um, and that's one of the things we've kind of struggled with, and, you know, the actual site line, we talked about. Vegetation and, you know, I'm not proposing an answer here, but I'm just saying, this is, you know, when we look at the context. The existing camp is the context, it's, you know, it's all over the place. It's, you know, it's not one thing, it's not farm buildings or farmhouses or barns or any of that, it's this. Amalgam of different forms, um. On a positive note, I think that the overall, uh, with the lighting, I think is a way of reducing the impact. Of this building at nighttime, because if the lighting is done correctly. There's an opportunity here that this building will have less of an impact than has in the past with all its, you know. Bright lights, but I think that we still need to discuss the, the overall mass of this building and how it's. How it's broken down in the visual on it, you know, we, we have some work to do.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, the, the site is not dark sky compliant now.
No, it's not.
So the, the net improvement. With this, any new structure there, make the whole property dark sky compliant, should be. A big. And I agree with the, how bright it is, it is, it's, as it is now, it's true.
I hope the applicant is, is listening, that. The dark sky compliance is not just for the building that's being, that's being proposed, it's for the whole property. We have to get it fixed.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, so one of the things that I was gonna propose, and, um, be perfectly honest, we keep, when I heard the helicopter story of this. But I've conned, I've conned down. Um, what I was gonna propose, we've, we've now been going at the public hearing for three months. Since June ninth, so I was gonna ask the board if they were, wanted to, um, close the public hearing. Uh, at this meeting. And then subsequently, at the end of October, um. We would go through the, uh, determination of significance. Under the, uh, under a site plan, you have the ability to do it after you close the public hearing, if you remember subdivisions, we do it. Integrous with or at the same time as the, uh, as the public hearing, but with site plans, you can do it after the site plan. And which is appropriate because you want all the information. So, I don't, I, I think it's appropriate, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing, it's not an approval of the project. It's a proposal, it simply says, we've gotten, we believe we've gotten all the comments, all the significant comments in order to. Move, start to move forward with the decision. And so the next step would be, if we agree to do that tonight, the next step after that, um, I instructed Dave. To be able to prepare the parts two and three of the seeker forms, which is the determination of significance. And if you remember, it's either positive or negative, if it's positive, then there's more work to be done. If it's negative, it doesn't mean there's no impact, it's just that there, there is no significant impact. With the exception of the following things, and then we define, uh, what's gonna have to be done in order to mitigate. Uh, the variety of things that the board agrees, uh, do have some impact. So it's a difference between significant impact. Versus moderate to no impact. Um, so does the board have any comments on whether or not they wanna close the public hearing tonight?
Alright, I totally agree with this closing public hearing, there's a reason being that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, you do or you don't?
I don't.
Okay.
And there is a being, this was just submitted a couple days ago, if not today. There is no new site plan, there are no detailed information, the public can, can make a judgment. So I think the public has a, should have opportunity to evaluate the updates to the design. And give them perhaps one more meeting for the council.
So, um, what specifically more do you want from the applicant?
No, I, I don't want to from applicant.
So we have enough information.
Saying the public has to have more time.
So we have the appropriate information, you just want the public to have more time to review.
Right, because it just came today, yes.
Yeah, and there's additional visual, aren't there additional visuals that they're working on that were taken with the wrong?
So, um, there were pictures taken from forty-four fifty-five, from the overlook of forty-four fifty-five. And those were blurry, they were done with the wrong lens, so I've asked that those be redone. Joel, you had somebody, or Mike, you had somebody taking the visuals, the pictures. And they were not adequate, what I saw was not adequate, and Peter, I think you saw them too, they were not adequate. Um, so that's what we're talking about there.
So maybe, give people a chance to look at this, revise and re submit those. Give people a chance to come and, and then we could close it.
Yeah, we've heard from the public today that people have seen this, these, these drawings, these renderings for the first time, today's the first time I've seen them, so, so.
I also think, I think we hear not new voices from the public, and I think it's really, really important, given the size and the. Significance of this project, listen to everybody.
Okay, is the board, is that how the board feels?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not even gonna take a vote, because it looks like we have at least five, maybe six who wanna push off the, uh, public hearing. But, uh, the specifics that we need are closing the public hearing, the specifics that we need, um, we only have two weeks. Well, we have this picture, we need those visuals, either Joel or Mike. Within the next couple of days. Um, the October fourteenth is actually the public hearing for Verizon, so I don't want. This to be on that, that meeting, it's gonna have to be pushed to the end of October. I can hear you.
Can I make a suggestion? It would be, um, we spoke about this earlier, but for myself as well, and it was already brought it up, um. It'd be really great if we could get a complete revised final. Package that we could review, because there's been so many changes, and I think it would include, hopefully, the SWIP. Like everything, just all at once, um, and then that would give the board members a chance. And this is assuming it would be at the end of October, I think that's what we're getting towards here, right, it's the end of October, so if we could get that around, if, you know. Soon, then we can all have a chance to look at everything that's been revised. As well, yeah, um, and then we'd have kind of a, it's like, you know, a, a stop.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um.
Yeah, pencil's down, thank you.
So Mike, we need everything that Jennifer just referred to. By the, by the fourteenth, to make the meeting at the end of October, and I don't have that. Tell you what date that was. I think it's the twenty-eighth, you know, the twenty.
Seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So Mike, I need, we have this, I need the whole package with the entire site plan. Redone, all the pages of the site plan redone, everything be, um.
There really haven't been major changes to the site plan, biggest change would be redirecting the drainage.
Would be the SWIP, so we need all of that redone and submitted by the fourteenth.
Can I just say, I, I would really like to look at it in hard copy, so that, you were talking about a fourteenth as the deadline. For me anyway, I can't really do this through Munich Lab, I need to look at the drawings personally, so could we get. Could we get hard copies, not just the.
So if we get the hard copies on the fourteenth, we'll be here for the fourteenth for the Verizon public hearing, which is. Gonna be a long one, um, so we'll have it for everybody.
How many sets of copies do you want?
Uh, one, two, three, four, seven, eight. And we'll break with tradition, if you wanna take them home, you can. It's yours, you can photograph them. And so, let me make sure I understand, it's the entire site plan package.
I think so.
And a new SWIP, Mike.
Okay.
That passes muster with Greg.
Well, Jennifer, you're talking about the map set, not the, not the EAF, not the. The ag data state, the whole package, and several dozen documents.
We've got the, uh, site plans.
Drives.
Well, we gotta be clear to them.
Drives.
The drugs. Not the EAF.
Rick, you gotta tell them what you want.
You want the architectural plans as well?
Yes.
Because you got them, they require significantly, and the site plans, like I said, they really haven't changed. The footprint and the.
The architectures or the exterior.
The elevation.
The elevations, and the ele, that all changed.
Yeah.
Are your cave is landscaping?
I'm sorry, Joe.
Are your cave is landscaping? Plan?
What they told me they were gonna put with the, with the landscaping, they gave, Dave, Dave and I, when we were there, gave us something, I said, no. Those plants won't grow any taller than two feet, so I gave them the names of some plants. Mike understands what they are. And I'll be satisfied when I see what he gives me.
Lighting plan.
What?
Lighting plan.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of this.
One plan of lighting and landscape.
I think the board wanted to see the whole site with lighting plan, I guess, right?
Yep. Well, let's go through every sheet, because there's something to be said to make sure that, so it's the site plan, Mike, which is obviously. What the site is gonna look like.
Fifteen sheets.
The landscape plan. The lighting plan. The SWIP and the impacts upon the site from the SWIP, from the.
The really document.
Okay. What else?
Board water on, we should see a plan.
Was included in the original set, he did, he always had somewhere.
But we, you mentioned that you were redirecting.
We're changing it, that's the one major change that we have to the site.
So we would need to see that.
It has to be done.
There is, there is a list of drawings on this.
Yeah, fifteen sheets.
I think that's.
I mean, that's what I was basically referring to. I mean, that's why we basically referring to you, you know, so that.
The only thing that's. Not on here is I don't think the um.
Also work for it.
Yeah, those in control.
The architect, the the uh.
Dark skies? Architectural simulator?
Well, then the profiles.
The elevation.
Elevations, copy. Elevations.
Oh, you want architectural elevation?
Yes, yes. It's not listed on here and I think.
Elevation needs some different.
Yeah.
And profile needs something.
Yes, yes, that's why, yeah, the architectural is.
Okay. Alright. We good? Alright, gentlemen. Alright, let me take a ten minute break.
They need to have all of them.
Yeah.
Here's the right one. Don't worry, they haven't played next part yet. Have they ever?
They're all missing. Because we have anything.
It's been like. Those are the only old. I. And so.
I already got. What is the why we are giving those tickets instead of saying, well, it's not us. They would, look, we got them. Same one. I don't know. Yeah.
I'll just say.
And then they have some one.
I don't know.
The helicopter. This was. Right?
Yeah.
It's two, it's two days. And the first. It just happens on Sunday. They're all funding those from Sarkar.
I know.
If it one of the.
Yeah. If it all times. The inner, I know that, yeah.
Yeah. That's.
No. I don't know. Inner slants on there.
I don't care. I don't, I don't really. Things of the conference plan. Certainly.
I think.
Head month. You know what, Peter, I don't know. Um. I'm sorry, I don't. I think that's what they had a short.
Significant adverse impact.
Well, I mean.
And if you want, and if you want to say it's not. You better.
Well, I mean, you're fully. But I was.
Yeah, I think. It's like a.
What I'm surprised when you can do the project with what not to do.
Plug in.
Ramsham. Fairly large. And that was actually care about. I had been to that. Neighborhood. This is not good.
Wow.
Before they. It's noisy. Especially.
I look.
That's your secret. But like you said, I mean, you and people. And they, and they, because I met. Your answer is that you're.
I'm just saying this is gonna be. It's a real issue.
Well, I don't know. There's a rather violation.
Yeah, no.
But yeah.
I mean, I. Sheriff. The frustrating thing is that he shows you. And like forward. Oh, the fear.
Oh, my.
Shit. But. I want to every cloud. You're right. Remember. It's a lot. It was right. And the door handles are down by, you know, below.
A lot. To the area.
Yeah, I just see why. I'm just going. It's such a leader of the family, the greater series. I'm just sort of. Yeah. Simplicity. As soon as the scientists. You know.
So depending on where you're.
On the architecture, I've always. Very, very. I'm not. Only thing I've never.
Is it charging?
No, it's something, it's something wrong with me.
And they don't like that. They don't feel buildings like that.
Yes, no, yeah, for me, this is not an architectural issue. All they did. People claim that a sizable building. Joey's on the road. That's. I don't hear the. He'll classical architect. That's not foul and do something to that. I I don't. Maybe it is.
That makes sense.
But they don't like. If it were a big bar.
Yeah, products were very.
Think about it. Second, it's the building version of a. Thank you. How many big bones? But, well. I mean, frankly, there's probably buildings on the side. This is next. This is right on top of the wall. Oh, screen.
But I.
Okay.
I get the point.
Whatever it is, make some point, make the point that's not. I'm just making a point that again, their concern is a secret on a decision has to be done.
Yeah. But they're allowed. These guys really should be. Yeah. Well, I can say.
Well, hopefully, we hopefully will. Because this is. Both. Didn't. Getting this stuff on. I could. Well, I get it. It's not. Three weeks. Yeah. You know. These were. Mike. It's a transparent side. Yes. Yeah, we don't know. You say that. So the example of this. You can sound like.
Okay, Verizon. Scott, you wanna? And it was. Scott yourself. Hey, Matt, you wanna um? Would you put, uh pull a chair there for Matt Allen? Take one of the chairs. And we don't normally sit.
I think you're right.
Uh, great.
Mitigation.
Whichever chair he wants. Which chair do you want? Everybody, Matt Allen. The rest of the night should be a piece of cake. You don't do helicopters, do you?
I just told that. No, we don't have any helicopters. I advise.
By the way, somebody did Matt, Peter mentioned to me that. There is another project here that uses helicopters in this. Which I know, I knew about.
But they, they.
Difference quite frankly is they land on their property.
No.
Not on somebody else's pro.
They also got got permit.
Okay.
By the flight plan.
They have a flight plan, they have it at the A, at the A.
Recommoned to high landing code. You have to. I don't see.
Yeah.
Nelson gave this to me. I don't know if it's new or old. But they have. It's not dated. I told her, I'd look at the. See if it's.
I think we have this, I'm pretty sure.
I think so, but.
Alright, so um I need to stand for a few minutes, just to stretch and events are quick, that's okay.
Except.
Um. So uh Verizon, we have quite a bit to go through tonight and um. And I'm not setting any timeline, um. Except eleven o'clock is I go to sleep. Um. Okay, so let's get, let's get started.
My laptop is about an hour left in it.
You're an hour? Oh, I told you, you have to get yourself a a charging device.
Better to tell you, I only have an hour.
So there've been, as many, there's been a lot of material coming in from um on Verizon. From all uh. Different corners of the world. Um, most of them from lawyers, Scott Olson and Mr. Berg, um attorney for uh some of the opponents. As well as um. Letters from our own attorney. I asked um both attorneys, Scott Olson and Mr. Berg, to make up a list for me of the stuff that we should be um looking looking at. I did get one, I'm waiting for the other. Soon as I get that, I'll consolidate it. So at least you'll have a list of all of the letters. You can keep track of them and I'm gonna ask Stacy as we get new ones to keep this list up to date. So. Because I've been having trouble um. Making sure that I've read everything. Um. I I was gonna go through some of the recent letters and mention them to make sure that you you've seen them, but I'm not gonna do that. We don't have time for that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but before we do, we'll forget it, but the FCC shock bug, I have to raise that. Can we get a signed extension?
I have it for you.
Thank you, because I didn't want the alternative.
Um, finally, you're not gonna pull the shot clock one way or the other. We've been, we've been doing the right thing.
If the board were to sign it, I'm forced to submit a complaint. I have to, I have no choice. But that's why I want the shock block letter.
So I'm gonna sign it. Though there is an attachment to it. I'll sign it, but there's an attachment to it, which just says, hey, we've been acting in good uh. Good stead. Um. There've been delays. I didn't enumerate the delays. Most of the delays um were. Uh, you know, at at the applicants and not our and.
I prefer Mother Nature, but.
Well, there was Mother Nature, but there are other things. That we were delayed by.
I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, just can you give me the signed letter because I've got two weeks. And it's not the local people, it's out of all of our hands. Headquarters just says, this is such a wonderful.
You gotta.
For us. If they don't sign it, you have to submit the complaint.
Everybody has a boss, so.
Yeah.
I have the letter.
I would prefer not to and.
Just don't walk out without it, because you have to remind me.
Thank you.
It's in my pile.
Alright, sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. Um. You look like you wanted to say something.
No, I I was, well, I I no, I just, the only point is that the only reason why there was a delay is because. We're concerned on the shot clock and that we, you know, there's this feeling among the board that, you know, the board is moving forward diligently, doing our best. Without being in any way accusatory, there there've been delays, to some extent, it's been dissatisfaction with some of the. Application materials and some of the studies. And so, you know, we're not the only issue for that, but also we don't want to be. Um, we don't want to be accused in any form, so certainly not something as serious as a shot clock of delaying this process. It's taken a while, but there's been obviously a lot to do, a lot of concern, a lot of studies, and as you pointed out, it was also to some extent Mother Nature. So. Just, we're citing it, but we, and Rick's notation is gonna bring that out.
Yeah, and I have never suggested any.
That's right.
And you. I'm just factual. Let's, the extension is here, we need it, let's do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's um. So actually, the next thing is counselor at night. Um. I'd like your comment on, I know that the board's been seeing all these letters. I'd like you to comment on um. On these letters from the perspective of. Um. Expert testimony versus non-expert testimony. And what letters should we pay particular attention to or what? And the board just ignore certain letters, um.
The board's.
About the. Talking about the board, not not the courts, whatever goes.
First quick comment, the board is not ignoring any, any of those or some of those. Take reading everything and taking me seriously. Um. Uh, there have been a bunch of the boards aware, but over the last. I want to say. Month and and accelerating somewhat over the last couple of weeks, there've been letters from both Scott and also from Bob Berg. Um, essentially arguing over um expert uh test, e- expert qualification issues. And. I want. I'll, I don't have an organized answer to this, so it may be a little bit. Rambling, but and also it's complicated. There's a number of sub-issues in this, but the short. Messages, number one, this is a planning board, this is not a court. We don't actually take quote-unquote testimony. We take, people give us comment. And so we, the first thing is. We hear everything. To some extent, on certain issues of of court will qualify certain people to give certain testimonies, quote-unquote experts. And if the person doesn't qualify as an expert, they cannot give certain testimony. And if you want to go into more detail, in general, in court, there's two types of testimony. There's factual testimony, I saw this. And anybody can testify to that. You don't need to be an expert. You, there may be some cross-examination over, did you really see it? How close were you? Did you forget? Were you drunk? Or, you know, are you biased? But it's factual testimony, you don't need any qualification. If it's opinion testimony on a technical issue. The court would may just require you to flat out be an expert, and the expert can be defined in various different fields. Very often, it's a professional, a professional degree, professional accreditation. There's all different types of experts on all different types of issues. And in some cases, if you don't have the expertise, you don't get to testify. We are not in that area. We hear everybody, somebody in the in the public can stand up and say whatever they want, and we are listening. To the extent that we, we will ultimately determine whether that. It's not, it's not testimony, it is public comment and whether it's worthwhile, but we're going to hear it. Now, having said that. We are hearing. Factual, just like court, factual issues and also technical issues and also technical issues on which there's opinions. And and we're also hearing mixtures of all those things, and we're hearing letters that combine all those things. And the question becomes, to what extent do we pay attention to? Again, we pay attention to everything, but the question is, to what extent do we give credence to them? Um. Again, factual issues, somebody stands up and says, I saw, I saw a bird. I saw this, I saw that. Basically. You don't have to be an expert, but the question is, to what extent are you credible? Um, and very often, it could just be their bias, but once, and and there are, there are hybrids here, like we say. I saw a particular bird. Well, how do you know? And so. You see what I'm saying is there are gradations of this. So I want to say just at the outset. That um. A letter basically saying that a particular person shouldn't be listened to because they're not an expert is. Overstating it. That's, okay? Um, and to some extent, uh uh Verizon has sent some of those letters. Um. We're going to hear these folks, but we're going to also, the suggestion is raised that we don't pay attention to certain issues. Now. To get a little more specific. Some citizens have uh hired. A person who styles himself as an expert and is then giving us a variety of different types of commentary. And. I've just reread his, this, his letter and the bulk of, uh there's a lot of nuance here and it. I don't want to spend too much time because this is already gonna be a very late evening and perhaps we can revisit this more and I can perhaps write a memo, but it's quite complicated because. People in general, people on this topic and this particular person, they're submitting a variety of commentary from. I saw this, but most of his commentary was. I've read Verizon's application. And it has all these problems in it. And. Identifying these problems to some extent requires expertise to do so, and they hired a person who had at least some level of facility with this. But unless he's giving us an expert opinion as to what it is. It doesn't matter whether he's an expert or not. He's saying this, their, their application, and I'm not saying whether this is true or not, I'm just saying what he's saying. Their application is deficient because it didn't look at this. And and he's doing this because he has. Seen a million applications before and written zoning codes before, and so we'll get to the question whether he's an expert or not, and it doesn't really matter. And the argument of whether he's an expert is. Is actually, yeah, superfluous. Is what he's saying accurate? The board has all, not only the competence, but the requirement to determine whether what that he's saying is accurate. And. The good news for the board is. We have our own expert and we can just, and so and Verizon has their experts and they need to deal with it. So we just hate what he says. And give it to Verizon, give it to our experts and say, is this accurate? Is it a problem? And so we don't need to know whether this person is an expert. As a matter of fact, to some extent, Verizon's. Criticism of this particular person. Is valid to the point where he. Criticism of this particular person is valid to the point where if he starts giving expert. Advice, expert evaluation that falls into the realm of engineering. He's got a problem. He's all, interestingly, and this is for Verizon, he's making an allegation that Verizon's report was also. Not prepared by a professional engineer, and that may be, that may become an issue as well. And I wanna make a point, and Greg, I, I really want Greg to listen and, and to tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong about this, but. When you look at an expert opinion, somebody's, and, and he, he does give a bunch of opinions, but they're really just sort of coders at the end, that like, in my opinion, this, this is not, um. You know, they, they don't, they don't cover this well, or something like that, or they haven't, they haven't done this. But I wanna make two points here. I wanna, or I wanna point out two issues with respect to expert testimony. One is that experts are expected to be. Knowledgeable, very, very knowledgeable about a particular fact, more knowledgeable even than a layperson. In, in some cases, there are laypeople, including perhaps this, this individual, who's read a lot about this, who's familiar with it, who knows a lot about it, has worked with people. But the expert is assumed to have covered essentially all the bases in terms of training, that they've. From differential equations through everything else, and they kept themselves up to speed. The second thing, and, and this is really why I want Greg to comment, is that. In certain areas, but particularly in engineering. An expert, an engineer, has a credential at stake. A license at stake. And so if a person who's not a credentialed engineer, a credentialed expert says something. There's no recourse against that person, they can say anything, and, and that can be very useful for advocacy, but it also carries with it a certain difference in weight. For an engineer to do something, including giving a comment. The engineer has, has something at stake, has an, has a license at stake, and, and, and a professional, and professional engineers are licensed. To, among other things, to protect the public interest, to protect public safety and health, and to do, and to do the public good. And if they go too far out of bounds, they, they put that license at risk, and that's the second reason. Why in certain areas, expertise is important. When you go, and this is why courts will require, it's one thing to have, you know, expertise, but you can read a lot of books. But there's an overall consideration that the profession, um, regulates itself. And provides for the public, for the, any, for, for somebody who hires them, for a regulating body like ours, or for a court. A level of, um, I don't wanna say certainty, but a level of assurance. That what you're getting is, is a statement from the profession, and you don't get that assurance from others. And am I close to being accurate here?
Yes, and I, I think the one, the, the addition to that is, is that that engineer is an expert. In the field that they're referring to.
Right.
So, because engineering is very broad, and I'm, so for instance, if you're looking at RF, I am not an RF engineer. We went out and found somebody that is. Um, but, so they're, they're attesting to that.
So where this boils down, with respect to that particular comment, and there, and there's really two we could refer to, because there was, there was another comment that, that the lawyers were arguing over, but with respect to the. Person, and he said a bunch of times he was an expert, but in some cases. He is, but he's not a professional engineer, and that was brought up by some of the materials that, that Verizon sent. The point is, his letter, which is about ten pages long, has a number of assertions in it. And some of them are just direct observations, some of them are criticisms of the application, which, again, anybody can make, and we have a real responsibility to look at and to. And to go through that, and some to the extent he's expressing an, an opinion. As therefore, I don't believe this is adequate, uh, they haven't done, it can be something that we can essentially. Take with a grain of salt, and I can go into more details as to what that means, and, and whether it stands up in court, but. Um, it's not worth going through. I, I, and I wanna just take a, a minute on two other points, one of which is the other letter we received, which was from Michelle. And again, there's a number of observations there, I, you know, I saw birds at the site, and, and, and she goes through certain things, which an expert would do, we, you know, we, we use a certain. Um, technique, but which I'm, I'm actually not familiar with, and she's identifying species. Um. Because she doesn't have credentials at stake, and we don't exactly know what her level of biological expertise is, clearly she's got a lot of experience with respect to being, you know, uh, her own. Activities, being in clubs and things like that. Um, you can evaluate, um. And you can evaluate credibility, and, but, and all the species, but the other thing that's important is that. From this, and I don't wanna get too into the detail, but. One of the things you would get from a professional expert, one of the things we demand from our experts is ultimately an evaluation. Uh, is this issue important enough to, to require further information, let's say, in, in terms of a positive declaration? And I'm talking specifically now about ecological issues and habitat issues, although it applies to anything. Michelle, and not only over personalize it or anything like that, at the bottom, she, she didn't quite go there, she didn't sort of give an opinion, but to the extent, again. That bridge. I mean, there's birds there, there's all, and she's identified the species, assuming we believe her, but. So what is the result? Is this tower going to damage these birds? She's assuming that based on, basically, RF concerns and things like that. So it never quite got there, and we would need to figure out a way to bridge that gap, and most experts, we would demand, we. If they didn't bridge that gap, we, we would take that as, as something that was significant. So these are all fairly complex issues that are not easily resolved. By essentially, the attorneys that were arguing in, in some sense, not arguing past each other, but arguing different points of view, and I wanna make one other point about. Um, Mr. Berg's letters. Um. At some point, Mr. Berg basically wanted to, um. Change the conversation, I would say, from what he calls, into what he was calling the standard of review. And he put a lot of, um, uh, comment into the fact that a standard of review. With respect to a review in court, is whether or not the board's decision is, is supported by substantial evidence. And substantial evidence that, that, that would allow a court to sustain our decision. Is not even at the level of fifty percent probability, and he points that out, because, because, and which he also points out. The, the court will to some extent respect our judgment. We can choose. Between competing experts, between competing, between competing, um, evidence, and. There's a fair amount of respect for our choice, and the way that respect plays itself out is that a court won't overturn our choices, there's some. Reasonable, uh, amount of substantial evidence, but that may fall less in, in, in some opinions, including the court's opinion, less than fifty percent. Having said that, the point before this board is not. To, is not what is substantial evidence for something, as in less than fifty percent, or. We can get to that, but what we need to sustain our judgment for the court. The point before this board is really the preponderance of the evidence. That's what, that's what our judgment is, is which side. To the extent that there are two quote-unquote sides or alternate opinions, which side has the better argument, which side has more evidence, which side has more credible evidence? That's our job. At that point, once we make our decision, our decision is defensible, if we've done a good enough job, that we have substantial evidence. But when it comes to evaluating quote-unquote experts or quote-unquote opinion, or what people are claiming about. The ecosystem or the effect of the ecosystem or all that, our job is to figure out. According to the standards we've got, which is the zoning code and seeker and other things. Which of the compiled evidence, which of the compiled data is more likely than not to reach our standard on that, okay? So Bob Berg is correct when he talks about substantial evidence, but we're not in the business of figuring out what a court. Would sustain in terms of what we do. The only way we would, the only way we would be is if we came into this with a particular opinion, in other words. If we want a particular result, then we gotta figure out how much evidence we need to get to that substantial evidence, so a court would sustain it. I don't believe that's where we are, that's certainly not our job, and it's what, it's not what we've been doing. We are trying to figure out who's got the better argument, fifty, fif- fifty-one, forty-nine. And so, um, that's, that was my reaction to it, uh, one or two of his letters. Um, having said that, his, you know, his arguments defending, you know, whether or not somebody is, 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 gives us relevant evidence, is. You know, has some validity, because we see all, we see everything, but to the extent that if somebody's issuing an opinion. Um, we, we're gonna wanna see somebody with expertise. So that's, I sort of. Run through the whole thing, and, and, that's both too short. And it's too long, because it's getting late, but the other, the other point is, what's necessary for us to do is to go through each of the. At letters that are submitting evidence and figure out for almost every point that was made. Uh, does, does this require expertise, professional expertise, or can, is it okay, or is it just one of these questions that they're raising? Which we, which in my view, we do have to pay attention to. That's the story of it.
I just, less than a minute, just clarification. There is no, as far as I'm aware, there's no licensed professional RF engineer. That doesn't exist in the state of New York, correct?
Correct.
It's an electrical engineering, or it's a structural, civil, et cetera. So I think that was just said at some point, so there's no such thing as a licensed professional RF engineer, but.
Fair enough, and, but, what we're looking for in terms of expertise is two things, in my view. One is a PE, because that's where we were getting at in terms of the person who's, who's. Who's credentials at stake, they screw up. So. PE is gonna be the gold standard, as it is for the courts or anything else, when you wanna prove your expertise. A PE is the gold standard and is what we need. Secondly, as, as I think Greg was pointing out, Scott's pointing out. And so, like a lawyer too, once you're, once you're, once you're credentialed, you know, you, you, you've got that credential, but what we looked for in terms of anybody's trying to make a difficult decision. Is somebody with particular expertise in a particular area. That's the, that's the shorthand for an RF engineer, so we wanna see a PE. With, with significant credentials in, in RF.
Yeah, I understood. The second thing is, my letter challenging Comey, and I actually have a lot more information, because I've known him for twenty-nine years. I'm not here to argue that, uh, that'll be forthcoming. But I always intend, and I think I spoke with, uh, the chairman. We wanna cha- I'm gonna challenge him for the record, just in case there's a lawsuit. But we fully intend to and will be, and it'll be this gentleman's job, he will be providing a response to Mr. Comey. And the substantive response will show you that Mr. Comey doesn't quite understand what he's really talking about. That's our position.
Do you have a response for, for Comey's point that your, your report was not prepared by a PE?
What? Uh, he, he, no, other than that's how the industry works. I mean, we can get a PE to sign it.
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, that, that puts their, that puts their credentials online. Almost every, uh, typically, you, if, if they.
You want somebody to get a structural engineer to sign it, or somebody else? I mean, it's, it's.
I know, well.
You want someone with an electrical engineering degree.
Exactly.
Yes, he had an electrical engineering degree.
Well, so he's, you know, I'll leave that to Greg, but my point is that typically, let me, let me just finish this sentence. Typically, a submittal that we're relying on, that the public's relying on, is gonna have a stamp from a PE, in my experience. Uh, if, if, if that's not the way it works, I'll.
Not in wireless, I'm, I'm, but having said that, we'll, we'll take other advice though.
But that'd be even a different.
Okay, I just wanna get to, I wanna get to, not that these aren't substantive issues, but you guys need to talk about who needs to sign it.
Yeah.
I'll sign it.
Are you a PE?
Alright, so I wanna get to two, um, two or three things tonight. One is, uh, let's do the RF first, I just wanna tell everybody what we're doing with the RF. There's been, um, there. First of all, we're not allowed to look at RF impact on humans, that's by law. Please correct me where I, I slipped up. Having said that, um, there was certain, um, comments made, um. Regarding RF needs analysis, the whole nine yards. Regarding a third current, um, tower called the City Hall Tower. That the City Hall Tower might be, um, positioned well enough and high enough in order to. Replace or, or obviate the need for the tower that's being proposed. So a while ago, I'd asked Scott, um, to answer that, and it's in Munich Lab, it's. Page thirty-six to forty-nine, it's supplemental document. Um, and it talks about the usefulness of the City Hall Tower, essentially saying it's not useful. Having said that, I did ask, um. Our RF engineer, help me out Greg, his name is.
Fishman.
Fishman. Doug Fishman. I just asked Doug Fishman to take a look at both the comments from, um, opponents. As well as the comments from Verizon, put them together, and give me a report, um, by the end of this week. On whether or not the City Hall Tower can be used as an alternative to your tower proposed. Um, the little that I can tell from the technology is, no, it doesn't. Um, but I want him to do it, and so it was a small price tag attached to it.
Sure.
Uh, not that I'm sensitive to price tags necessarily, but I wanted to know what it was gonna cost, so that's coming. So anybody have any questions about it? If not, I wanna get into the visual, which was the primary, um, question of tonight, the rest of tonight with Verizon. So over the last. Months, we've had a number of, um, visual analyses done. First one that was done, um, our. Expert, Matt Allen, everybody knows Matt Allen, um, suggested that it needed to be, um. Upt in terms of, uh, the information and the methodology. So I don't remember the date of the original one, but the date of the second one was August eighth. Subsequent to that, Matt looked at the report of August eighth. And we had a very long, um, conference call with a number of experts with PEs and everything else at the end of their name. To discuss, um, the eight-eight document. Matt can go into a lot of the detail, but essentially. Matt was fine, there were seven different points that were made in this document. And it's all there on Munich Lab, um. Of the seven items, he was fine with five. And there were two that he raised questions about. One had to do with the viewshed analysis. The viewshed analysis is. From how far away from this tower will you be able to see this tower, given certain circumstances? And. The viewshed that was projected by Tectonic was actually, in Matt's opinion, larger than what Matt believed to be the case. For a variety of different technical reasons, which I won't go into, because I don't understand, Matt can go into them later if you have questions. The second item that he didn't agree with, um, what had been done in the eight-eight redo of the study by Tectonic, the second item was. Uh, having to do with the height of the tower as portrayed in the documentation that we got, as well as the width of the tower, so the mass of the tower. Which was done by a variety of different methodologies. And actually, Matt told me, uh, in a separate conversation, that. They actually sort of, Verizon is sort of disenfranchising themselves by their projections. Because he believed that it was projected to be wider and higher than it actually was. And so he questioned what's called their photo simulation, methodology that they use for this. So I literally said to Matt, so in other words. If my board was to make a decision today, they'd be making it upon what you believe, Matt. Not me, because I don't understand, but what you and my consultant believe to be. The need for additional input to get this more correct for the board to see and to have the correct information. He said, yes, so. Um, I talked to Scott, and I told Scott that I was gonna be asking Matt to redo both the viewshed analysis and the photo simulation. Has nothing to do with whose methodology is correct. The only thing that I wanna be concerned, that we, I need to be concerned with is the board has what our expert is telling us to be the correct information. And so Matt is gonna do the study, and Matt, I know, I want you to elaborate a little bit, and of course, if you have questions, ask them, and. I'd also ask you to let us know what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we were gonna talk about the cost and whether we were gonna do it or not, but.
No, we talked about him doing it.
You, you mentioned it, but you, I said, well, we might wanna do it, depending on what the cost is, so. And when you, again, just clarification, but when you, we basically sound like, and Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong. We provided kind of a worst-case scenario. In other words, what you're suggesting is. If you do the review, or if Steve's group does it, it's gonna show a lesser impact, which. I always like showing the worst-case scenario, because I think that's, you know, worst case, and I think we should kind of base the decision on that. Having said that, we understand what's going, going on, so.
So Matt, why don't you take it from there?
Okay, you, you mentioned there's two primary, um, items. One is the viewshed analysis or the viewshed map. Um, and the other is the, are the photo simulations. Um, with the viewshed map. We had some back and forth with, uh, the applicants engineer Tectonic on methodology, um. And my recommendation would be the methodology be upped to include, um. A greater level of detail by incorporating LiDAR data, as opposed to using, um. The National Land Cover Database, uh, for, uh, to identify vegetated areas as visible obstructions. Because the National Land Cover Database is based on a thirty-meter grid square, or about a hundred foot by a hundred foot. Square representing forest areas, which is very coarse, not very accurate, um. So the way things were done until LiDAR data became readily available. Uh, LiDAR data will give you a much more fine-tuned viewshed, um, so my recommendation was to do that, which Tectonic did. Um, but Tectonic has submitted a map that has some irregularities on it, um. Uh, the map. Was recently submitted, and you look at the map, um, it has. Very fine-grained stippling in forest areas. Uh, which I don't understand, because that's an unusual. uh, which I don't understand, because that's an unusual viewshed pattern. Uh, if you won't relay this on an aerial photograph, it's clear that that pattern falls within a fully forested area. Um, I'm pretty sure that that is a false return off treetops, uh, which is generally remedied by using your LiDAR data to identify any area above eye level, and creating a coverage to crop that out, and then what you're left with are viewshed areas that a standing observer would see. So, you know, Scott is correct in that this is showing a worst case, but it's an inaccurate worst case. It's not that you're seeing areas on the ground that are just slightly larger than uh, the viewshed should be showing. You're seeing areas that were, showing areas of visibility where visibility simply does not exist. And it's an error that is on an order of magnitude beyond what uh, one would actually experience with a, uh, a correctly created viewshed. So, the board could, uh, adopt this because it is worst case, but it is an inaccurate worst case. It's not just, uh, showing a little bit of overage, it's showing a lot of overage in areas where visibility will not occur. And logic may not occur, if you look at this on top of an aerial photograph, uh, a layperson could understand. If you're standing in a forest, you're probably not gonna see the tower outside the forest. So that's, that's my concern with this viewshed map, and.
Let's move on to the.
Yeah.
So the height issue of the map.
Yeah.
For the photo simulation.
Situations, um. The applicant did provide to me, uh, last week or the week before, the actual J P E G photographs, uh, that were taken in the field, as well as the resulting J P E G photographs, um, that the photo simulations were created on. Um, and what we discussed with the applicant is that the photo simulations were created by taking a photographic snip of an existing cell tower, uh, or a model cell tower, I'm not sure, uh, how they were done, but that was then superimposed in a photo editing software on the top of the photograph that was taken during the balloon test, and then scaled using the known dimension of the balloon, uh, as a reference to then scale that photo snip into the photograph, and then using the location of the balloon to superimpose, uh, that in the correct location. From the J P E G photographs, um, that were provided, from balloon test, the photographs appeared to be the ones that were taken on April nineteenth, which was the day that the three, the cluster of three balloons were phoned, uh, three six-foot balloons to give a dimension of about twelve feet, looking in any direction, which is roughly the spread of the antenna. However, what I saw in the photo simulations taken from, uh, further distances, and this is they appeared more accurate than the ones where it was very clear there were three balloons. The ones from more distant, it appears that the tower was scaled off an assumed balloon width of four feet, which was the balloon size on April eighteenth, um, when the two balloon tests were done, one with a four-foot balloon, and the eighteenth, one with thirty-six-foot balloons on the nineteenth. So the tower that was superimposed on the photograph looked to be about three times wider than it would have been. It matched up. Uh, it assume, if you assume that the balloon visible, fuzzy as it was in the photograph, was four foot, then the tower would have been correctly scaled, but the balloons in the photograph that the tower was scaled from was actually twelve feet. So, there was an overestimation of about a factor of three in the width, um, not necessarily the height, but of the width of the tower. So, again, it is, um, an overestimation of what would be visible, but a, a correctable error.
Um, but only in terms of width, not height?
Well, height is another, um, aspect. I did take this analysis far enough to build my own three D model to confirm the positional accuracy of the tower, and I could not, uh, get a match between my three model, my three D model and the, where the balloon was in the photographs. In, and I modeled every, nearly every location that a photo simulation was provided from, and in every case, I was finding the balloons to be about, depending on where the balloons were measured from, five to ten feet too high. So, again, the photo simulation of the tower was probably wider and slightly higher than it would appear. So, again, Scott is correct, that the information provided is a, um, overestimation, but it is an inaccurate overestimation. So the board could act on it, saying, okay, we have this information, we, if we choose to find that this is not a significant adverse visual impact based on the information provided by the applicant, you would not be, any correction in that information would only be downsizing the tower, so the impact would get less. But you would still be making a, uh, determination based on known inaccurate uh, viewshed and photo simulation. Which is why I suggest it's not a heavy lift to simply, um, go back and correct those errors.
So when he told me that, that's the point, which I spoke to Scott to say, I can't have my board looking at worst-case scenarios, I need for them to look at something that's, is accurate. And the term that he used is it's an inaccurate overestimation, and I think we need an accurate estimation. So, um, the board, Scott, the experts, um.
Yeah, like I said, uh, just because I said it was an overestimation, that's fine, if, if what is gonna be done is gonna show even less of an impact, because in my view, it's not a big impact as bad as it is. So if we're gonna show less of an impact, that's fine. Uh, you know, if you want the most accurate information like that, I, that's.
No, the board, I think, needs to make their decision based upon accurate information.
I agree.
Everybody, so how much?
I've, I've already done most of the work, just to be able to understand what I was looking at. It's probably about sixteen hours or, you know, two man days of one of my modelers finishing up.
Where's that come to?
Hundred dollars an hour is my average, I might say twenty-four hours with one of my under-dollar-an-hour guys, so twenty-five hundred dollars tops.
So twenty-five hundred dollars, I don't, by the way, I don't usually like negotiating like this, probably, but I saw.
One is not self-serving here.
So I, I, but I saw no way of getting this resolved, given the, um, given the immediacy of it, and, uh, I didn't have a number to give this, John, we talked, talked. Are you okay with that number?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't make the financial decisions, but I'll talk to the client tomorrow, but I, listen, the work is done. And so I'm assuming, so how about I just shoot you an email tomorrow, like, um, I don't see a problem with it, but I'm not signing, check.
But don't forget you're getting your shot clock memo. Okay, alright, so I think we're good. What I'm hearing is we're good, but.
Yeah, I, I was wanting to ask a little stupid question. One of the, um, unresolved issues so far in this, that actually hasn't raised all that much, but is on the twenty feet, uh, extra that the, that, that another applicant can go. And it's, it's been left sort of out there, well, if, if we did determine that that was a real thing, what we should do about it. And one of the possible things to do about it is also look at a tower that's hundred and sixty-plus feet high. Would the overestimation in the simulations that have been provided to you, if we did decide that this was something that was important to look at, which, by the way, I want, I'm gonna ask the, I'm gonna ask the public and the app, and the applicant to get some more information to me on that, in terms of the law. So far, what I've seen is, hasn't been quite good enough. Would the stuff that you've got already, that you've viewed as an overestimate, be helpful with that?
I wouldn't wanna use it for that, um. Because it's probably, it's probably not as high as twenty feet overestimated. It may be five to ten feet overestimated. It would be better to do a technical analysis, and, you know, I, I don't wanna, you know, I would expect the applicant to say what you are willing to do, um. But if, it would be very, very easy to do one example of that tower at twenty feet higher, just so you see.
Through, through the technique that you would just be doing.
Okay, that would be minutes longer.
Alright, so let's do that.
I, let's, hold on, we're not going higher, and, and, and I will provide a mechanism, I already told you what we're willing to do. We are committed to not going higher than one forty-five. We're in the process of doing a lease amendment, which then can put something on the land records, and that is Trump's, we, um.
Twenty foot.
Well, sixty-four R nine.
Right.
So, yes.
I'm going, you, both you and Mr. Berg have sent me legal analyses of that. I'm not a hundred percent satisfied, in, in a sense, there was, we, we both sort of missing what I was looking at as the point. I was planning on asking you, and, and anybody else who wanted to comment, including, um, the, the citizen commentators for further information, because of the letters that came in over the last week, I never got a chance to write that up. But I, I did wanna see some clarifications on some of those forms.
So, would somebody explain for the whole, I know, I know what you're talking about, but just bring the board up to date on twenty feet.
Under section sixty-four. On the spectrum act, sixty, sixty-four R nine, the spectrum act, it was done in two thousand and twelve. It was basically a wire to the Middle Class Tax Relief Act. And what happened is, it said, listen, FCC or the government says, we like the fact that if you have an existing tower, we don't want new towers to be built, so you should be able to, as a right, basically increase it by give or take twenty feet. That's a very certified version. Um, so, that law applies only to states and local municipalities. It doesn't, doesn't apply to private property owners. We've done it in other situations, a town of Hyde was one, I think, where, um, the town was concerned with that, and we said, basically, limit the height of the tower in the actual lease agreement, because it becomes a private property issue, and that way we can expand it. There's another mechanism to do it. We could just revise the application and say, we're doing one twenty-five, but we're gonna go up to one forty-five, and that's the, that's the twenty-foot as a right. But we just, you know, we, we're committed to doing it. We, we're not going over one forty-five, and we're willing to put that in writing on the land records to make that a covenant, basically, in the, in the land records.
And I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, um, clarify the impact of that, but I, you don't need to do it right now.
Okay, but you wanna make sure, we're, we're very committed to that. We're not messing around. We understand the concern. He says we need one forty-five, that's what we need. We, we don't come in and go.
But just be clear with the board, the, the Berg is saying, Bob Berg, who's the attorney for, for these folks, is saying that regardless of what they do, and this may not be true, but regardless of what they do, that the, that somebody, that another cell ta, another cell provider can always come in and supersede what's going on. I certainly can supersede the town's requirements, and, and.
Not only on the tower, they can't. Not only on the tower, that's an absolute falsehood.
I'm gonna drill into that a little bit.
Okay, so that'll be a le, le, legal argument, and that would make the board feel extremely comfortable.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, we're gonna have to think in terms of some other.
I, I told you, there are two ways to do it. We're happy to do it either way.
Okay.
We're committed to it.
So the next thing, uh, I wanna bring to the board's adventures, everybody I think knows that, um, uh, Verizon went through, um, wrote to the Z B A to be on the Z B A agenda for October sixteen. And I'm, I'm gonna let Scott explain, um, all the ins and outs of that, but my understanding, I won't even say my understanding. Tell us why you do it and why we should not be.
Two, two reasons, basically. Uh, one, we understand that this board's not gonna make a decision on the waiver until the end of the kind of process, uh, when you complete SEER. That's fine. However, if you decide at that point in time that you're not gonna grant the waiver, I then have to start at the Z B A. So my approach is, I'm starting the Z B A now. I have every right to do it. There's nothing that prohibits us from doing that. Uh, despite Mr. Berg saying that they shouldn't even consider or take us onto the agenda, which is another issue entirely. Fine. So the point is, I just wanna start the process, so that, and I also do disagree with the standard of review that Mr. Gordon provided.
Well, that provided a number of criteria. We haven't yet chosen these.
Right, so what, I disagree with the proposal of this nine-part test, so the standard before the Z B A is very set in stone, it's very simple, generally. Doesn't mean they're gonna grant it, but it's something that we are comfortable with, so we would like that process to proceed, so that we don't lose extra time.
And, uh, if you remember what I, the reason I said I'm putting the waiver at the end, the waiver we're talking about is our code gets the tower height up to ninety-five feet, and so they're going another fifty feet. And they were asking us to provide the, the waiver of the fifty feet.
Which is specifically authorized in the, um, in the, in the code.
Yes. Well, what do you mean, to do the waiver? We can do the, yes, sure. And what I suggested to the board is that I wanna wait until we go through SEER, because I wanna have a rationale for saying yes or no to the fifty feet, rather than arguing about, is fifty feet too much? Is fifty feet too little? You know, how many angels dance on the tip of a, of a pin? Um, why don't we have something specific? And that, to me, may, was logical, uh, more logical to me, and so that's how we're doing it. I'm not, maybe I should be, but I'm not concerned with them governing the Z B A, because our attorney has told me, uh, that, uh, the Z B A cannot make a decision, uh, if we haven't made a SEER determination.
That's, sorry, just so everybody understands that, when you have a coordinated review, this is the nature. Remember, the last time we dealt with the coordinated view, or an uncoordinated view, is we had to make a separate decision from a subdivision over in, uh, Worthing. In this case, because it is a coordinated review, the Z B A cannot make its decision on the, uh, on the applied for variance until we do our declaration of significance. If it's a neg deck, then they can go ahead as we can ultimately with our decision. If it's a pos deck, then they can't until we finish the environmental impact statement process. So they, in order to get the environmental intelligence to do their, um, the five-part, uh, uh, area variance analysis, that it's gonna be our SEER review that, that informs that.
Yeah, and I.
So you can go ahead and.
Agree a hundred percent, the Z B A cannot issue a decision until SEER is compliant.
So whether or not they would go ahead with the hearing, that's up to the applicant, and it's also up to the Z B A as to how they wanted to, that, that, how far in front of the uh, declaration of significance they wanna get. Obviously, we do, if we did a pos deck, it would take another year or something like that, so. Um, what, how much work they wanna do in front of that, it's gonna be up to the, the conversation the applicant will have with the Z B A. Z B A cannot make the ultimate decision. They probably, if they wanted to, they could hold a public hearing.
So the idea is that the, you're advocating to go down a parallel track, just in case.
Yes, I'm absolutely right. It's not, that's all it is, because I'm just trying to think of, okay, in terms of our schedule, obviously, it depends on what this board is gonna be doing, but we're trying to get this on the air in twenty twenty-six. So if this board didn't feel comfortable with the waiver, and we got towards the end of this year, well, then I had to start pretty much at the Z B A scratch. I wanna just get a couple of months ahead of the game. That's all.
Okay.
Uh, hey, I, so if we declare a false, the false debt, what, uh, so Z B A can override that?
No, 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 override. There's two different issues.
What's, what is the role of Z B A here? Because I didn't see in the code anything about Z B A allowing something, okay.
You, you're mixing a couple of issues, I'm not sure which ones. First, most important issue is that they need a significant, it's, the, we'll call it variance in a bigger term, variance or a waiver from zoning, zoning requirement is roughly ninety-five feet, they're at one forty-five, that's obviously, uh, you know, uh, an exceedance and a significant one. So they need something to come along and say that that provision of the zoning law doesn't apply, and something else does apply. They can get it in either of two places. They can get it either, typically, and if, if this was a, if this was a site plan for a building, like, like, like the previous folks we had, they would need to get a variance. It's the only really thing that they can do, because we, we cannot change the zoning code by and large, especially for a, a standard that, that, that's being applied. In this case, the code, because, because of the nature of this standard, that we could talk about, we're not gonna do it tonight. The code specifically give the planning board the, the authority to issue a waiver, so they can get the relief that they need, to use a legal term of art, not necessarily taking one side or another. The relief that they need in either of two places, they wanna get both moving at the same time. So the Z B A can give that relief. However, having said that, because this is a coordinated review, and this would be true of D E C as well, if D E C was issuing a permit, they cannot issue, in order for anybody to issue a permit, they've gotta comply with SEER. In a coordinated review, the agency doing the, the action doesn't necessarily comply with SEER by doing its own declaration of significance in E I S. There's a lead agency that does it for everybody. They have to, we're the lead agency, they have to wait until we do the declaration of significance, if it's a neg deck, before they can do what they, what they, we give their, give their variance. And if we did a pos deck, they've gotta wait until we do an environmental impact statement, do a final environmental impact statement, and do a finding statement. and do a finding statement, complete the SEER process, so that the SEER process has produced a body of environmental information that then becomes part of their decision-making process and our decision-making process, and if there was a third agency, their decision-making process, that is the nature of coordination.
I, I was, wasn't really clear what authority Z B A has in this process, what you're saying, because it's written in zoning code. The heights and it's.
We have a unique authority. To go to. Well, they go, the Z B A always has the authority to vary a number in the zoning code, a height number, for example. We usually don't, but in this case we do because of the nature of the particular restriction, the town board goes that in.
The code regulating these towers is in the zoning portion of the code, and they said specifically that we could do it, so.
In addition to Z B A.
Yeah, that's right. Dave.
Can I go back to visual for a moment?
Yep.
Since there are experts are in the room. So we've set for the board, so we're at the point where we're gonna find, we've got a quick path to defining what's visible and where. But there's a second part to this, is it significant? How are we getting to that, Matt?
Simply reference the New York State D E C program policy on visual impact assessment mitigation, which has a definition for significant adverse visual impact.
Well, let's start, I mean, we we start with simulations, right, so we, so the, so we can all see what it looks like, right? And then we would compare it against the standards.
Yeah, well, I can, you want me to read it? Cause I'm not.
You, you can.
Significant aesthetic impacts are those that cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of an inventoried resource, or one that impairs the character or quality of such place.
That's who we did, you see.
So how do we get to that?
The photo simulations are taken from inventoried resources, or men- many of them. Um, an inventoried resource is, and there's a list of about a dozen and a half categories, policy. But in the ca- in this case, the state park, the scenic road, um forty-four fifty-five, the overlooks, uh two oh nine from down in the valley, um.
Minawaska.
Yeah, Minawaska, those are your key places, if you can look at the photo simulations and say, I don't think this is going to diminish the public's enjoyment or appreciation of this resource, then you can conclude that this is not a significant adverse visual.
How much diminishment measured? It ha- has it been quantified previously?
I, I have.
I mean, you're talking opinions today, isn't it, a scene?
So there's an example in that, which comes a little later, it says, for example, if uh you wanna put up a large cooling tower, it's gonna spew whatever it spews, and it, you can be visible from Minawaska, you know, uh not visible, if it's like right in the major view, and that's what you're looking at, that's an example of it, it's, it's in the D E C.
Well, I think Dave is saying, how, how big and how bad is too big and too bad?
Well, I mean, we've got a, we've got a unique circumstance here, I mean, if people don't notice it, a very historic, beloved facility, sticks out like a sore thumb on the ridge. Which is Mohawk Mountain House. And a skytop tower.
Yes.
Um, yet the granite, or the Hudson Valley Resort now known, also sticks out and is despised by some people. Um, but it's actually lower, so I I'm just trying to figure out, for the board's purpose, how do they get to the point where diminishment is, it's.
It's gonna be a judgment call?
The, the only thing I've ever seen are public preference surveys taken from in the park where you you walk the trails and you talk to people, show them the simulation, say, would you be bothered by this? You know, obviously, it's a little more complicated than that. I'll leave it to the board to decide later.
Board, I, I wanna put, the board makes these sorts of judgments, if not all the time, it's not infrequent, when, when you look at whether or not there's diminishment of uh of of the neighborhood character, when we looked at, for example, um uh the Accord, uh Accord Granary, and you were trying to fit that site into into the downtown. We make judgments like this all the time, and I also wanna point out that the judgment we're talking about here, at least at this point, especially because we're not talking about the waiver, is not a permitting judgment, yet it is simply a judgment as to whether or not we need more information in the form of, ultimately in the form of an E I S, whether we do a pos deck or a neg deck, that's the things before us now, and so the question you're looking at is, is this a significant, a significant adverse impact to the point, a potentially significant adverse impact to the point where I need to see more information in the form of environmental impact statement? And, you know, once, once Matt and and with with the, with the support from Verizon produces the visual simulations, we will get a sense for what this looks like from some of these vantage points, and then it will be the board's judgment as to whether we do a neg deck and move to permitting with whatever constraints are on the permit, the color of the tower, or anything like that, et cetera, and and the height, or whether we need an environmental impact statement, so we've, we've made, you don't always have an engineer telling you what to do, and you don't always have a specific number here, it's, it can be a judgment call, and then it's, it's our job to do that.
So will the visual simulations be one antenna for Verizon, or will they be four?
Or, or simulator.
The applicant showed uh both options, um, you know, if, if you ask, I will show both options, I'll, I'll.
We did, we showed, I think.
Yeah.
Just as a, again, a worst case scenario.
And, and again, it's, it's very easy to add the additional three antennas.
I just, Peter, just so you know, the, the words have been spoken more than once, our job under seat, the board's job under seat is to look at the reasonable worst case scenario, so we're not, you don't assume the best, you don't assume that the leaves are always on or something like that, or so, you know, the, not, not the abs, you know, not the, you know, the, the reasonable case that you would expect possibly could happen, worst case scenario, so there's gonna be, there's possibility of three have, three antennas on it, et cetera, that's what we can ask them to do, so you can take a look at.
I, I personally would like that, because I think it's unlikely it's gonna be one antenna.
Yeah, we, like I said, we've done it, so.
Yeah.
It should be consistent with what they've already done. Already done, they've, they've done it, they're a thorough job, I just have the questions that I have.
Yeah. Cool. Anybody else on, on visual at this point, so we're waiting for the word, that presumably Matt's gonna do it, for a talk to Scott sometime tomorrow.
Yeah.
You can permission.
I have a quick question, when you're talking about three antenna, three antenna and one, in one elevation or three antenna?
No, it's gonna stack, three different elevations, yeah, they have to be separated.
By, by the same company or?
No. No, it would, it would be. Verizon will be at the top, and they've got a locator to come along.
Put it another way, the Verizon quote-unquote antennas, you can have three of those different directional thing.
Co-location.
Well, so, so each, each quote-unquote antenna actually has like three pieces, or how, whatever the number is, so you're talking about three different heights, each one of which is gonna have multiple pieces to go in different directions, I'm not sure if you're in the right.
No, three sectors, exactly right, and on each sector they have different number of antennas, usually two or three or so.
So your worst case is gonna see a fair amount of equipment up there. Uh, and you know, I wanna point out one other thing for the board, that there are two other sort of contextual issues, and we, we, we were really urged correctly to look at this in context, one of which works in favor of the applicant, one of which works in favor of the view that it's just gonna be very, very significant. The one that's in favor of the applicant is probably that the, most of the vantage points are gonna be from a significant distance, and you know, we're gonna see that, and 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 Matt can also comment on that. Um, and me- and distance measured in terms of miles rather than feet. The thing that works in favor of the citizens that want to us to take a harder look at it is that there are some fairly significant um, you know, visual resources at stake here, you, you're talking about a facility that's, that's against the ridge, you're talking about views from you know, scenic byways, so in both of those things, the, the, the distance issue will come into play when we see the simulation, it's gonna be right there. You can see, you know, whatever the size is, the fact that there's a significant resource, the board's gonna have to factor in in terms of the declaration of significance.
Okay, uh, does the board have any energy, uh it's ten thirty, do you have any energy to talk about the environmental impacts um on the floor and the fauna and that, with respects to um this project? There've been a lot of letters written by the opponents, talking about the impact that this is gonna have on um.
Do they have expert opinion?
Sorry.
Professional expert opinion?
Yours or theirs?
Us.
Yeah, I want your expert opinion about whether or not it's gonna have any impact on the floor and the fauna.
Why? No.
He's asking, do we?
I am asking, do we? Or will we?
I have a question. And I think it's a legal question.
Okay.
So, as I understand it, we cannot use R F as a factor if health impacts.
We can't use R F on health, uh R F is, as a need is fundamental.
But R F on health of.
Of people.
On people.
I'm sorry for interrupting, I looked at that, the statute of, the statute doesn't say people. Statute says, once we demonstrate compliance with FCC regulations, radio frequency impacts, uh and for slash environmental effects off the table.
So let's, let's presume that that factor, right? Then my understanding is that um, but insofar as we're talking about migratory birds nesting, things like that, if, wouldn't be the R F impacts on any potential bird, migratory bird nesting, it would be, it's a tall thing, a bird kidnaps on it, and does that impact it, that's the way I was looking at that.
I don't follow that, because that would, that would be positive by itself, without the R F, that'd be a positive.
I think what Jennifer's, what Jennifer's saying, we can't consider the R F impact on the bird or the bird's eggs or whatever, but we can consider the impact of the tower and a bird colliding with it uh in terms of impact.
Thing in the environment, but not.
Right. And that's, that's a yes.
And that was my, okay.
Now, to that point.
And there was a discussion about insects. We don't have any evidence on that.
So, to that point, Fish and Wildlife, and the Fish and Wildlife report, if I recall, suggested that Verizon or Tectonic had written that they will take mitigation to, to avoid as much of that as possible. Guy wires are not being used that they can crash into, and there was a host of things they were talking about, um as far as them alighting on the, on the tower, they would use um I would say rubber duckies, they would, they would use owls or whatever, predatory ba- birds in order to keep them from nesting. But they would do things, they couldn't guarantee that it wouldn't impact them.
Right.
But they would do things to mitigate it. But on the issue of R F, what Scott is saying, I didn't read it that way, but we'll have to get clarification of that.
Sure.
As far as the R F is concerned, we can't consider the impact of R F on
And that was my.
Birds, birds, eggs, insects, plants, the whole nine yards.
All right, let's check.
Okay.
And on that issue too, just the U S Fish and Wildlife has signed off and said we can proceed with this. They've reviewed it.
Coming from a.
From a migratory bird issue, for the Dina bat and a nor- northern long-eared bat issue. Right, and a butterfly, no, that was not an issue, so we touched base with them, and they said they're okay with that.
It was the two bats.
Yes.
It was birds, it was not monarch butterflies, because there was no evidence of monarch butterflies in the area.
Correct.
Have you submitted this to Fish and Wildlife, did you include the federal migratory bird component in your supplemental?
Yes, they addressed it, that's, that's correct.
Does Fish and Wild, when Fish and Wildlife looks at this, do they consider the R F issue on the birds?
I have. Okay, R, I don't believe they do, no.
I mean.
I don't think they can.
Uh, when the issue was raised by the citizens, I honestly had never heard of it before, and so my question, you, you were very definitive a few minutes ago, saying that, you know, the, the prohibition on using R F on health applied to animal health as well, and I, I didn't know that that was ever.
It doesn't even say health, if you look at the statute, no, I don't even think it says health, I think it says, once we demonstrate compliance, blah, 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 that um, of state, local municipality cannot consider environmental impacts on, on, at all, doesn't say human health, doesn't say anything. It's no one about the impacts.
Cannot consider R F from an environmental impact.
Correct, correctly, exactly.
Consider.
It doesn't limit it just to humans.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
I was not, I, I just wasn't aware how the issue was dealt with at all by anybody, I mean.
Because as I was reading a lot of the comment letters, I felt like that was a component, and I just wanted to make sure that we were all the same.
There was a very significant component of at least one of the comment letters.
With what we were, what the law stipulates in that regard.
I'm not sure which of the many comment letters you were referring to.
So many, you know.
But it, the one that I'm thinking of suggested that the decrease in insect populations and so on and so forth, and maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but I think if Scott is correct, I don't mean to say that you're not, but we need to.
Yeah.
We cannot consider.
So then I forget what section.
And I also, I'm of the opinion, just as, that correlation doesn't equal causation.
Well, that, get, let, when we get into questions of proof. No, no, you, you, but questions of proof are another significant problem here, but the, the letter that I was thinking of also identified a large n- number of bird species that were claimed to be quote-unquote protected by D E C, which I, which I took to mean protected under the New, New York State Endangered Species provisions.
Are different, so for example, bald eagles are protected under state guidelines, but they are not a federally protected species, so
federal.
They're not federally protected, but the state.
Well, this particular statement included things like robins and things like that, if I, if I recall.
Well, the Migratory Bird Act includes like a mil, I mean, I could even begin to start listing off what's included in that, but.
But the question with this, these were observed in the area, and the question became uh, is the, at least, well, as I interpreted, in fact, the, the comments never got to that point, because there was no proof, but the question becomes, would that be, would that have an, an impact on these species?
My, in, in my, not expert opinion, but in my opinions, my unexpert opinion, if we take out the R F waves, which do travel over distance, and we can't consider that, then the only thing to consider in terms of impact on birds and bees is that fifty by fifty or a hundred by a hundred, that plot of land, where.
In the loss of habitat because of the hundred by hundreds?
Or obstacle. No, or obstacle.
I'm sorry.
Or obstacle.
Because of the tower.
Or, yeah, but that's it, so.
Right.
I'm trying to get an idea of the bird, of the board, board's con- uh confidence with those kind of comments, that's the area that we should be looking at. And that we can't look at the R F impact.
Well, at the end of the day, something like that, you'd want somebody with a, with some expertise in biology to explain, I mean, we could all speculate, but that that, that puts us on very dangerous ground, you want somebody who understands something about it.
Well, that's what they did, that's what they sent to Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Assuming the Fish and Wildlife looked at that issue, I, I, I don't know.
Fish and Wildlife said to proceed. That's all I can tell you, we followed their process, they have a process, and they said this proceed, in fact, they looked at it, and they never even responded to us, and that's deemed an approval, because they, it's not an issue.
And, and you're confident that they looked at the issue that was raised by the, by the citizens?
Well, you're assuming that's a real valid issue, I mean.
I'm not.
If you had to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Building a tower within a fifty by fifty will have no impact on robins.
No, no, that's what I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about R F.
I, I would say look at section three thirty-two, C seven, and I don't know the sub-numerate, but it talks about.
It's obviously a prominent section in terms of people that have looked at.
Not prominent enough, I can't remember that.
I'll, I'll find, I'll take a look at the words.
All right, the, the one, I think we've rattled through a lot of things, we still need uh input on the R F uh on the city hall.
But I do want, because of, of all this, of all the applications you've looked at, you, this issue has never been um before, you've never dealt with this issue, it's never, no, no, no board has ever looked at it, no court has ever looked at it.
No, no, never, it's just.
Okay, let me finish what I was saying.
You go.
Um, with the exception of getting more input from Matt and, and also on the city hall uh tower, that we're getting some input from uh Mr. Fishman. The only other item that I have.
You know, I don't wanna delay it, but Brendan Penney is here, he can certainly speak to that, because he did the work, if you're, you wanna hear.
On which one, on which?
City Hall.
Uh, I would like to hear that, I just wanted to mention the only other thing for tonight that I can think of is the issue of real estate, but we may not get there, that might have to wait to some other time, so why don't you have Brendan go through the city hall?
City Hall. Sure, so um, I'm assuming the specific issue that you're talking about, the city hall uh is the ability to provide the needed offload um as our, as our currently proposed site would.
Yeah, well, specifically that city hall could take the offload. You don't need to build what you wanna build, city hall could take care of it all.
Correct, so.
So.
Yep, so, with the city hall roadside, it actually um, and it sits north of the cur- the existing Kerhonson site, which um, as shown in the, the justification report here, we have two sectors in need of offload on Kerhonson, um those being Alpha and Beta, and both of those sectors face in a southerly, southerly direction.
Southeast and southwest.
That's correct, um which is towards, you know, our currently proposed uh site location on Granite Road. Um, so, in order for the city hall roadside to offload those two sectors in need of coverage, we would have to overshoot the Kerhonson site, which creates um what we call intra-network interference, so basically, if our sites are too close together, or if they, if they cover the same area um at a similar signal level, it basically creates interference, and the users' devices have a hard time deciding which site to go to, um they have a hard time accessing the network, and it just. The network and it just, it really degrades performance, so just geographically. It doesn't make sense to overshoot. Existing sites to cover, um, you know, to offload the sectors that face away. Um, and the other issue would be that. The um, our mid-band frequencies, so the twenty-one-hundred megahertz band. They don't propagate as far, um, due to just our propagation characteristics. So the 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 twenty-one-hundred megahertz signal from City Hall Road is not going to offload. Those two southern-facing um sectors on Kerhonson and and the twenty, the importance of that is the twenty-one-hundred megahertz band is where. Most of our bandwidth resides, or most of our licensed bandwidth, so. The the low band, seven hundred and eight hundred and fifty megahertz, um, that's twenty megahertz of our bandwidth. The the AWS, PCS and mid-band frequencies, they give us um. Uh, in this area, they they give us about. Uh, almost two hundred. So you can see it's 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 important that we cover the areas in need of offload with those mid-band frequencies. Um, that that's how we gain the most capacity, the most capacity offload.
So Brendan, I thought. And and maybe you're saying the same thing, I'm just not understanding it, because it's not my area of specialty. But I thought the issue with the City Hall was that. In the areas that you need more coverage, namely southeast and southwest of City Hall, is where you need more coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Those arrays were way over capacity.
On the existing Kerhonson.
On on City Hall.
We're not, we're not on City Hall right now. We're, we are in the process of locating on that tower, because we do need, we do need coverage in that area.
But you need it to the north and the west.
North and west of.
Of City Hall.
So we we need coverage in the general area of the City Hall Road Site, but that site is not going to. Effectively provide enough coverage to the two existing Kerhonson sectors in order to offload that site.
Okay.
If that, if that.
Did you know about that tower? When you were doing the location?
So we know about the, I believe this was um, this is an American Tower owned tower, um, I believe. And so it is in our database, but when we're looking at. Our network needs, basically, I knew that I needed to offload these two sectors on Kerhonson. So that site being located, you know, two-point-two miles north of the Kerhonson site. It was never considered as an option to offload these two set, although it's.
Yeah, but I I just believe my, you never mentioned it when you're doing your.
Because again, this project was to cover the southern south of the Kerhonson site.
I know, but you guys specifically said there are two towers in town of Rochester, the Accord and Gronson.
That we are on.
Yeah, no, but I know, but you mentioned that there are two towers and this is gonna be a third one. It just seems, I don't know, it it just rubbed me the kind of wrong way when when I heard that there was, we learned, and we had asked about another tower. And it was never mentioned.
Again, Horizon's not currently operating on City Hall.
I I know, that's not, that's not what I'm saying, is it's, it wasn't a question of where you're operating, it's a question of where there are towers. And now you guys are thinking about going on that tower, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, we talked about it in February, so I think the chairman raised it.
Yeah, and I never got an answer back.
There's a need up there, we said, yes, there is a need up there, you're right. Correct, and unfortunately, this one was basically a lot faster, they don't all go in the same timeframe. Um, but I think, I understand what you're saying, Peter, I I get it, it's. Probably should have in the whatever report, whether it's a site selection, she said, okay, there is a third tower, um. But the reality is, we need both of them. So and I think that is at least, doesn't address your question, I get it, you rubbed your wrong way. Point is, we need both of them, so that the City Hall Tower is not a substitute for what we're doing.
So, uh, what I want to know is, so you're going on to the City Hall Tower?
Well, we're good, we're trying to.
Okay, so. Maybe I have, geographically, I have it all screwed up in my head. But from the proposed tower to the City Hall Tower, I knew it was two-point-two miles.
Um, no, so from, yeah, from the proposed tower, from our proposed tower on Granite Road. To the Kerhonson site.
No, to the City Hall.
I understand, so to the Kerhonson site is two miles, and then. The Kerhonson site is almost a midpoint between our proposed site and City Hall Road, City Hall Road is another two. Approximately two-point-two miles further north of Kerhonson.
Okay, so it's four miles.
Approximately, it's not, you know, I don't have the measurement right here, but. Two miles from here to Ker, or from Granite Road to Kerhonson, two-point-two from Kerhonson to City Hall.
And so Brendan, you were suggesting that given that four miles. Correct me where I'm wrong, it's a combination of. What arrays, you have three arrays, which arrays have capacity, which ones don't?
That's.
Number one, the arrays that are pointing the four miles to the new potential site, Granite Granite Road. Don't have any more capacity, quote-unquote.
Sure.
Plus. The megahertz, or or the available megahertz, I guess, is the same thing as capacity.
Hmm.
Are not in that direction, and the direction that they can serve and that you're going on it for. But to serve what I call the northwest. Um, north northwest portion of the town of Rochester, going up Sampsonville Road. Is that why you're co-locating? Why are you co-locating on a tower which previously. Didn't tell us about and you weren't gonna use, why are you co-locating on it now?
Because we do have coverage needs in that area.
And which area is that, is that going up Sampsonville Road, which Peter was, he want wests, going west?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm not sure the road, but I mean. The city, the general vicinity of City Hall Road Tower, we are in need of.
I'm sorry.
Is Kerhonson down as a sandmine?
Yeah.
I know Rainbow Diner.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not a situation of one or the other. And that's usually the case because of the ubiquitous use that um, and and. I say this, I'm not the engineer, but I spoke to this guy so often, and I speak non-engineer, so maybe this will help. Um, but the reason why the capacity, and you certainly jump in if I'm wrong. The reason why Kerhonson is suffering capacity so much is because this area that we're talking about, of this new site, not City Hall. Is in such dire need of service that the users in that area are trying to use their devices, pull the signal. From Kerhonson, Kerhonson, and there's only a limited capacity, that's why, so the capacity is actually created by lack of coverage also.
Uh, I want to make two suggestions. First of all, of what Brendan just explained, you should write it up.
It's in the record.
Okay, exactly, those comments specifically.
Yeah, like the chairman said at the beginning, it's page thirty-nine to whatever, that's.
Forty-six.
Yes.
Then I would suggest to the board. That we take that suggestion specifically in light of the questions that were raised and send them off to our RF engineer.
I did that already, but. Were you assuming?
I'm doing well.
I just, when when did you send it to him, Greg?
Uh, Sunday, or Saturday or Sunday.
Okay.
Or Sunday, that's.
So we are sending it to our RF guy.
So it's going to be ground truth.
To get. Additional information, try to triangulate.
We'll evaluate, we'll evaluate specifically, and objections, it gets, it gets to the heart of the application, so we gotta make sure we've covered all.
Well, it's part of the needs analysis, which was where we started this whole thing back in February. And and Peter's right, the fact that we didn't know about City. I guess we knew, but we didn't know, it wasn't in the report, but, you know. Locals, and I'm not a local, knew that there was something up there, but the fact that it wasn't mentioned is just of concern, so now we want to know.
Yeah.
What's the deal?
But the citizens have asked the question, and obviously it's central to the application, so we just need to really clear it, so.
Yeah, of course.
I think there's a a lack of understanding. Think of myself here, about the different bandwidths. Service, I guess, is what you would call it for five G as opposed to nine hundred megawatts or whatever the. You know, and, you know, one of the things I find myself wondering, listening to this, is what is the need? Uh, on Granite Road as opposed to Gronson Tower as opposed to uh, City Hall? And are you guys trying to fill in gaps for your own service, or is this really need? And that's that's one of the questions that I ask myself, as a non-engineer. With no initials after my name, but I, you know, I just, I I want to understand that. And understand when we're listening to, you know, a lot of concern from the public about this. And then something like that gets left off, but now it's someplace that you guys are interested in doing, it just, it kind of. Like makes me scratch my head a little.
So the whole deal with, I think. The whole deal with megahertz, there's a particular, the optimal megahertz is what, what what range?
So it depends what you're talking about here, so if you're talking about the transmission frequency. Um, generally, the lower frequencies will propagate further, so.
When you say further, you mean distance?
Yes, sir, um, so in this application, we show seven hundred megahertz coverage for our low band, um. And that is going to be the layer that you see propagate further, and the maps, it shows that. Um, when compared to our uh, our representative mid-band frequency of twenty-one-hundred megahertz shown in the application now.
Which which megahertz frequency carries the greater amount of data?
Mid-band.
Twenty-one-hundred.
The twenty-one-hundred, um, uh, band, yes. So that's going to be more of your capacity layer, as opposed to your seven hundred megahertz is more of your coverage layer. Um, now, so that doesn't mean seven hundred doesn't provide capacity offload. Because seven hundred can do things that the mid-bands can't, like propagate further, propagate further into buildings. Um, propagate further into, you know, just dense areas, um, the mid-band's just more susceptible to to loss.
So to a layperson, I just want to make a phone call, seven hundred is good enough.
Not if you're on these overloaded sectors.
Right, right.
If I just want. Valley, the valley, and that's not good.
It depends what the signal strength is in there, that's shared.
And but if I want to um, download a video.
You're gonna want to be on the mid-band spectrum for that, yes. Now, will it work on the low band? Yes, if it's not congested or overloaded, but it it'll take long.
Alright, I'm gonna wait for the RF guy to tell us some new questions. I appreciate it.
I would suggest that you do a layman's term write-up for us, or for the public also to understand, because. I learned a lot of things about mid-range frequencies and all that kind of stuff, but it's still, it's, I think it. It would be helpful for the for the public to understand the need for this.
I think just for our education, it might be useful, I'm not suggesting that you act as our RF engineer, because.
Correct, just just how does it work and why?
But for our education, I think that, I know I'm interested, just as a matter of. I'm interested in everything.
You get simple, so.
And sure, so just so I'm clear, the heart of what you're looking to get at is the difference between the two.
No.
Why would I need?
Why why would I want, why would I want, um, you told me that City Hall. Doesn't have much in the twenty-one-hundred um, megahertz range left, right?
But doesn't have anything, we're.
Has nothing.
We have nothing, we have no service in that area.
I'm sorry.
So it's, it's kind of unrelated, I know the people in community.
Kerhonson is is. The Kerhonson Tower is overloaded at wall bands.
Um, not, not on all sectors, all low bands, all all of the seven hundred megahertz bands on all three sectors are.
Are overloaded.
I believe it is in here, but on at least one of those sectors, the twenty-one-hundred megahertz is experiencing exhaustion. Um. Or at least, so in these graphs, it's a period of about a year that's shown here, and so you'll see. Uh, that's a curve, let me go to Kerhonson here. So Kerhonson Alpha, so basically when you look at these, the purple line is gonna be representative of our seven hundred megahertz band utilization. The dotted red line that goes across straight is basically the one hundred percent utilization threshold. Um, so anytime you're above that, service is is poor or unusable.
You'll bleed bad luck.
Yes.
I think Hans is questioning, if you could just give us an um. A brief.
Very.
A brief, brief.
Simple.
On.
It's insured.
Yeah. I don't. We don't. I don't want to get into a debate on anything, Michelle, if you have a question, fine, but uh.
No.
Or suggestion, but go ahead. I can't hear you.
I don't want to get into a debate either. Just along with what Hans is asking, could could that explanation include? Whether it's four G or five G or both, which numbers are related to which numbers?
Well, you'd have to, you have to define what five G you're talking about. There's a big misconception about.
Well, maybe that would be important to.
And I know a lot, I'm I'm sorry, um, and. I I answer this question every three times a week, every week. There are people that think that these towers are being used for. What I'll say is uh, five G milliwatt, don't, I don't care what that means, other than it's super high frequency, like thirty-six. Gigabytes is super high. We're not using these towers, again, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so it's it's um. What's that, no, you're fine, what Scott's referring to is the millimeter wave uh, band of our licensed frequencies, and that's up in the thirty-seven gigahertz range. Um, twenty-eight gigahertz and thirty-seven gigahertz are the two bands that we are licensed to, we are not proposing these frequencies for this project.
Because there are, there is a contingent of people on the internet that think that this milliwatt, whatever it is, is dangerous. I'm not taking the position, well, we don't think it is, but the point is that if this facility gets built and everything. Like I, you know, you might see five G here, but understand, there are two different things when it comes to five G. We are using fifth generation technology, which is just the next, you know, it's equipment that's been evolved through four G. But it's not that high-frequency five G ultra-wide, don't they call it ultra?
Well, so our C-band is also considered ultra-wide band.
Okay.
You just want to think of it like millimeter wave is the really high-frequency twenty-seven gigahertz. And twenty-eight gigahertz, thirty-seven gigahertz, and again, we are not proposing it on this site. Mostly because it would serve us, it would not serve us well, because. As we've shown with the twenty-one-hundred megahertz, you know, that doesn't propagate well, and that's orders of magnitude lower in frequency. The higher your frequency gets, the less your signal propagates and the more susceptible it is to loss, so. With a millimeter wave, if it hits a leaf. You're done, it's not going any further than that, it's very susceptible to loss. The millimeter.
He's going to higher, higher frequencies.
That's why I said it depends on what, how you define it.
I mean, the frequency goes up. Less less coverage.
Next time around, I'll be a what?
Tower as well, tower and airport. Airport, airport road, airport road. Is that your?
That's the Accord Tower.
The the core tower? Airport's road.
No, I I think it's a home mini-tower, tower, if I remember correctly, but I might be wrong.
With the landfill.
I think homeland. Yeah, we probably, if it's a landfill, we didn't know.
Yeah, no, that's.
Too conservative. I think homeland tower.
Speaking of bandwidth.
Yes.
Alright, so um, you're gonna give us something to help us understand the tech now, just a little bit.
You are.
And I assume that, I assume this whole business with five G, four G and all that. The higher the number, the higher the radio frequency.
The higher the number means the higher the frequency, and that's just a physics issue, so the higher frequencies, the wavelengths go like this.
Right.
And they don't travel very far, because all the energy is in the.
Up and downs.
Condensed waves, whereas, you know, if you use like one emergency services, the waves are like this.
He's asking five G and four G, it's a equipment, different generation of equipment.
Yeah, think of, think of the difference between five G and four G more like a technology rather than a specific frequency, so. And we have five, we have five G that runs on our eight-hundred-fifty megahertz, which is part of the low band. Um, so it's in about seven hundred megahertz. And we have five G that operates in the three dot five gigahertz range, um, which is. Kind of in our mid, we call it our mid-band spectrum range in the twenty, close to twenty-one-hundred megahertz, so it has similar propagation characteristics to that. And then there's also the five G for the millimeter wave, which again, we are not deploying on this network site, so.
Alright, so um, on the fourteenth, we have the public hearing. Alright, and um, I assume that it's gonna be a long meeting.
Sure.
Be providing them with the opportunity to describe the project, to explain. What the proposed project is before we open up, we had talked about it, but I don't know where we might have.
How late do you want to be here?
I know, but I.
I'm serious.
Well, we should, we know.
Hey, hey, let me answer the question. I would like to see some sort of a, not just jump into it. So, we, hang on, hang on, let me answer the question, I would like to see some sort of a, not just jump into it and. With the public hearing, I'd like to see some sort of a brief presentation by you guys, similar to what you did, Scott, with the um. Not suggesting this is how you do it, but you did something on the screen. Which just says, hey, this is what we're proposing to do.
I could do something like that, if, if I.
Not, not.
Did we get to work that time, okay, I'll put it, I'll bring my stuff, it works, it works.
Okay, ten fifteen minutes.
Yeah, just if, if somebody, the public shows up and they have.
I agree with you, but I don't want to be.
We have people from the public that are here, and maybe they haven't read anything, they can get up to speed. If they have some basic understanding of what the project is.
Very usual type of presentation on a big project before, before a public hearing, although it shouldn't, you don't want to have forty-five minutes or anything.
Oh, I, I tend to find ten minutes good, yes, you know, I, I know that they're not gonna want to hear me talk, they're gonna want to.
I've got another question, and forgive me for not knowing the whole record, I know you um, want, you wrote a letter dismissing uh, Richard Comey's. Um, letter, but had, but what, what I said is he's, he's kicking up a lot of questions which don't necessarily require expertise. And so I want to make sure we've got answers to those questions, and I would like to see is something that organizes those answers and expresses them. And we can, and we will also, if we can, have our RF person.
Sure.
Take a look at, I, you know, the citizens are raising these questions, and it would be really not smart of us to move forward without having really direct answers.
I never intended for my letter to be the only letter, it was just that, with what was getting out quicker. I talked to Brendan and he's doing that by maybe the end of this week or so, so next week, hopefully.
And as, good, I was gonna say, especially to send, he's raising questions on RF, on, on need.
Yeah.
As opposed to visual, I think it's on a little bit different track, but certainly just that question of do we need this on every level. I want to see some, some answers, and I want our RF person to take.
We intended that, absolutely, a hundred percent. Who, uh, public hearing notices, I didn't look at your code recently about it, you take care of them, do we take care of the mailing?
They're already mailed, and the strong, but they need, it'll be in the Friday.
Awesome, I appreciate that so much.
Okay, I have your shot clock.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I second emotion, please?
My laptop is still moving, didn't tell you about her.